All right. Good to see a good crowd out here this evening. Appreciate everybody being out here. If we can please call the meeting to order and call the roll call, please.
Certainly, Mayor. Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski.
Here.
Councilmember Al Britton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. If you please join me in the pledge and then remain standing for afterwards. We're going to take a few minutes to remember 9/11. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just please remain standing just for a few minutes, just for a few moments. Thank you. All right. We have been blessed in the town of Southwest Ranches to have partnered a number of years back with Davie, the town of Davie, for their police and their fire. And during those years, the officers that have spent their time in the ranches, they've become, they've really become part of our town. And they have, our residents have gotten to know them. They've gotten to know our residents. They know all the quirks about the ranches. And it's been a very special relationship. And one of the, one of the officers that's been, been really special to us is Officer Kristi Laguna. And she has just done amazing work for us. I don't know if there's a resident in town that doesn't know Kristi. So, and it's because of all the great things she does. And so, we are pleased this evening to recognize her that she's going to be retiring. We don't like it, but we didn't have a say in it. So, so it's going to happen anyway. But, but we have a proclamation for Kristi this evening. And Kristi, maybe if you can come on up. I don't know if you're used to being the center of attention like this, but thank you for enduring it then. Let me read the proclamation. "In honor of the town of Davie Police Officer Kristi Laguna upon her retirement, whereas Kristi Laguna commenced her service as a police officer with the Town of Davie Police Department on July 16, 2001, and whereas Officer Laguna was assigned to the town of Southwest Ranches in April of 2020, and whereas during this time Officer Laguna has become a trusted and relied upon member of the Southwest Ranches family," very true, "and a true friend to both the community and the equestrian lifestyle, and whereas Officer Laguna served the town of Southwest Ranches and the Town of Davie Police Department in a professional, dedicated, and loyal manner, and whereas on October 10, 2024 Officer Laguna will retire from the Town of Davie Police Department after 23 years of faithful service. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches wishes to express our gratitude and our appreciation to Officer Kristi Laguna for her many years of dedicated service to the town and the safety and the community and designate September 12, 2024 as Officer Kristi Laguna Day in the Town of Southwest Ranches." Congratulations and thank you.
All I have to say is thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Kristi, don't, don't sit down yet. Don't sit down yet. Not getting off the hook that easy. But, but do, we do thank you. You are a member of the family here in the ranches. You will always be a member of the family out here in the ranches, and we appreciate all that you've done. We would like to also present to you a plaque for your service. So, let me come on down and the rest of the council, please come on down. I'd like to present this to you and maybe take a few pictures.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could also ask that the members of the Public Safety and Traffic Committee, who are here representing tonight, be also brought forward to take some pictures with Officer Laguna.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Russell. All right. Mr. Garrity, can we get started? All right. Very good. All right. So, the next item on the agenda, we're doing some presentations from FPNL, Comcast, AT&amp;T, updates on that. Russell. A little hobnobbing out there. I don't know. Could have a future in politics. I don't know.
Yes, Mayor. It's my pleasure to call up a few members of the different service providers that provide service to the residents here in the town of Southwest Ranches. So, representing FPNL, we have Baldwin English and his team. I don't remember everybody's names, so I apologize. He'll be here. Vic Benedetto from AT&amp;T. And I know we have Dawn Stagliano and Ricardo Davis from Comcast. So, I believe we're going to start the presentation with Mr. Baldwin English, who has some presentation to talk about what their, what their future projects are going to be in the town.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. Mooney's. Thank you all for the opportunity to come and present before you and provide you some updates on our undergrounding efforts here in the town of Southwest Ranches. My name is Baldwin English. I am an External Affairs Manager for Florida Power and Light. If you are familiar with Ben Wesley, who served with us for 21 years, he has recently retired. I had lunch with him today and he looks good. Very relaxed. So, but you have to deal with me, fortunately or unfortunately. So, we've had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Mooney's previously, want to share with you some updates. So, to kick that off, I will invite my colleague, Dr. Michelle Saunders here, and she will be able to introduce the rest of the team and certainly guide you through the work that we're doing and planned work in the town of Southwest Ranches. And I know I've met a couple of you before. I will hang around if I can and provide you all with my card if I haven't had an opportunity to do so as of yet. So, thank you for the opportunity.
It's great to see everyone tonight again. And thank you so, for the Storm Secure Underground Program, or FPL Storm Secure Underground Program. You know, our goal is really to replace the neighborhood overhead lines with underground lines. And that's to improve the resiliency during hurricanes and severe weather. And it'll also improve the reliability of our day-to-day conditions. So, tonight I have my colleagues as well, Chris Duncan, who is the Lead Construction Manager in Broward, and also Amar Smith, who is our Engineering Leader. So, they will be reviewing, as we have on our agenda, press the next. We will review our construction projects and then we'll go right into our design and outreach projects and our 2025 plan. So, Chris Duncan, if you can come up.
Good night, everyone, and thanks for giving us this opportunity to give an update of where we stand. So, as you all know, last year, we had some construction on the west side of 75. So, I'm pleased to announce that all those projects from last year are 100% complete, meaning all the new underground is switched in, all the overhead primary lines, those are already removed. So, looking forward to 2024 projects. So, for this year, we had four projects. Imagination 25, I can pleasedly announce that one is 100% complete for this year. Projects 23, 27, and 26, they all are in active construction at this moment. Pretty much, projects 23 and 27, we're at around 70%, and project 26, we're currently around 65% with the projection of completing these projects by end of year this year, meaning getting all the new underground switched in, all the customers converted to that new underground circuit, as well as doing our overhead removal and our restoration. So, these are our current projects for this year. Now, getting into our forecast for next year, Amar will take over.
Good evening, everybody. For a design of 2024 currently, we have three projects currently in your city. We have Windmill 61, which is about 557 customers that it will be serving, that we're currently in design and outreach, which is where we have the folks go to the homes and talk to your constituents about what we're going to be doing in the area. We also have our Imagination 61 and 61-1 and 61-2 projects, which is about 124 customers that we're going to be converting. This project is just east of 75 along Volunteer Road, and then on the north side of, just south of Griffin, just, I guess, west of Flamingo Road as it is. There's a lot of other feeders that are in that area there, but those are not currently on the plan. And then we have our Stonebridge Project 63, 1, 2, and 3, which is about 121 homes that we're going to be converting. This is in the Sterling Road area, just west of Flamingo Road, just north and south of Sterling Road up until about 136th Avenue. These projects between Stonebridge and Windmill are currently in our design and outreach, and it should, it's going to go into 2025. Stonebridge and Windmill are currently not on our construction plan for next year. Imagination 1 and 2, which is this project here, is. So, this project will be out and about getting folks converted. These two are still within our design and outreach, and will be on the construction plan at some point in the future.
And then as we have on this slide, we have some new members to our team, but Chris Duncan, Amar, and myself, but then we've added Priscilla Edgema for, who's also in our presence today. She is a Senior Project Manager on the construction side, and then Marcus Isadore. And then Clara Lantigua is also on my team for outreach. But do you have any questions? We are, just want to leave room for that as well.
So, yeah, thank you. Just, we kind of breezed through that. It was good, it was fantastic information. So, thank you for coming out. We really do appreciate. This is a project that gets a lot of questions from our residents. You, sounds like you've got all the right information. You went through it kind of quickly. I'm wondering if we can get that, that information that you just conveyed to us in a form that kind of lines up with, you know, you've got all the different areas numbered. Can we get dates for each one of those so that we can communicate that out to our residents through our newsletter and other ways, so that, you know, we can, we can spread the word out? Because this is a project that we're very excited about in the ranches. And, and it's moving along fantastic. You know, usually a huge, I'll just be honest with you, usually a huge project like this, it gets started and, you know, it's going to get done by this time and then two or three. You guys are doing a great job of staying right on target, right on, on schedule. So, kudos to you all. But if we, if we can get what you've got here visually, if we can get that in a way that we can communicate that out to our residents, that would be really helpful.
We'll work on that. And was there anything else for us?
I just had a quick question as well, and I know it's in the design and outreach phase, which I understand why that is, on Windmill 61. The engineers were out early, I guess it was early summer, late spring, when they'd come by, and of course, that got everybody asking me, so when, you know? And here we are going through another hurricane season right now. I get it. Design and outreach means that's the beginning phase. When would you expect construction to start? And I'm asking you for forecasts, not a hard commitment. And then how long? A year, two years, once you get started?
From a, from a design, design and outreach perspective, it, it does take a lot of time to get everybody on board, right? Talking to all the customers.
I didn't want it on the corner of my lot either.
So, I know this project is slated to roll into 2025 for, for design and outreach. To get everything finalized. Unfortunately, I don't have a timeframe right now for the construction. We would have to actually get back to you on that one.
They're generally sequential, and they're like a year by year by year, or we, could we be waiting three years? And if so, who do we talk to?
I let the boss talk.
I can speak to that one. So, every year, we look at our data, and that criteria are the three things that we talk about all the time, which is we prioritize based on outages from previous named storms. And then we have the outages based on vegetation. And then there's our other reliability data. So, your day-to-day conditions, you might have a flicker, you may have other things, but all that data is looked at every single year, and that's how we prioritize which feeders we will work on. And so, right now, we don't have anything slated other than what was shared, and we'll just have to go back through that process again. And that happens usually mid-year, and then we start trying to finalize something by that, before that last quarter of the year.
And hopefully, you can plan something annually to come by and give us updates to keep us in the loop.
That, yes.
Or more frequent if you think it's necessary.
Yeah. So, whenever you need us to, but we'll send you some information based on our construction plan and our design and outreach plan that we shared tonight.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent.
Hey, thank you for coming out a couple of years ago in Sunshine Ranches. You did the hardening all along Lu Ray. You did the hardening for Malaluka, Appaloosa, and you also did Hancock. Skipped 136th Ave from Lu Ray to Sterling. And I was told, Ben Wesley wouldn't give me any time when it would be done. So, I was really disappointed in him saying, I can't give you any date because it's not in our plans. So, I was told by an FPL lineman one day that that area is one of the oldest lines in Broward County. So, I'd just like to know when we can expect to have hardening done on that portion of 136th Ave.
Just, is it the feeder or the laterals you're talking about? I'm not 100% sure what you meant.
Southwest 136th Ave from Lu Ray to Sterling.
Is that going north to Sterling?
It's, it's a, it's a north-south street.
Okay. So, Lu Ray, yeah, so that's actually on the design plan for this year? Yeah, right there.
Yes.
See, and that, that is one of our projects, correct, to Sterling. That is one of our projects that is coming up in the near future.
I'm sure Ed will appreciate it.
Yeah. So, that, that was the newest news. We thought we'd catch it, and we were like, he would be excited.
Thank you. I, I will say that a lot of our properties during the heavy rains get so flooded, you can't even tell what property line is, where a property line is. So, that needs to be taken into consideration.
That is definitely good.
Thank you.
And one thing to add to that, as we go out to the neighborhoods to talk about whatever plans we have, whether it's a transformer or we want a junction box adapter, the question they are supposed to ask is about flooding. We do look at the 100-year flood plan, and we take that into consideration, but we also ask the property owner if they get any flooding, because we do have the 16-inch pad and a 24-inch pad as well.
We've had, we've had, if I recall, in the last four years, we probably had two 100-year flooding incidents.
Yeah, two or three of them. So, they're not 100-year floods anymore.
Yeah, they're not.
They're regular occurrences. Yeah. We have a great drainage system in town, but we can only keep up with Griffin Road Canal.
And, and I did email a video to your, yes, sir.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out.
I have one question.
Yeah, yeah, Gary.
I have a question, if you may. Going back to 2023 construction, Imagination 64, if you could throw that slide up. You see the very bottom between the purple and the blue? There's a space, and then there's Sheridan Street. Everybody in that green space is asking me how come they weren't included? And I don't have a very good answer for him.
Is that Sheridan and 177?
Yeah, it's, it's where I live, it's Rolling Oaks. And I was right at the term, I was right at the termination of it, my house personally.
So, the way, the way we do it is based on the, the actual feeder for that area?
Right.
And that is served from a different feeder.
Okay. So, that feeder will be. Will it eventually be done?
It would eventually be.
Okay.
But we don't, I, I wouldn't be able to give you that information at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, anyway.
And you're putting grass down? You're putting the grass down? I got a nice smooth spot out front.
Thank you.
Ready to go, black dirt, you know? Looking for the sod. It'll be there.
All right. Are we good? I think we're good. Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right. All right. Yes. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. If there were no other questions for FPNL, there may be, but if they're, if they're not, then I would like to call up Comcast representatives from Comcast to come up and talk about what they're planning to do in the future as well. What I would also like to do is to ask all the providers to provide information as well to our residents, those watching on TV and those here in the audience, as to if they're, if a resident has a complaint or concern, how they can report that and ensure that issues are followed up, so.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Dawn Stagliano. I'm the Director of External Affairs for Comcast. And with me here tonight is Rick Davidson, our Director of Construction, who's overseeing the project of undergrounding Comcast lines in Town of Southwest Ranches. As FPNL undergrounds, they alert us through a system called Engines, and Comcast is then next to go. So, we've been following, taking our lines down from the poles. Comcast does not own any poles. They're about 50% owned by AT&amp;T and 50% owned by FPNL. So, we're going underground to come off of the poles. So, we're following FPNL's. In the projects they're going, we're going after them.
Excellent.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, can you, one of the things that, that I've heard a number of times is that the process, we do see that you're following them there, but it seems like there's a large gap between when those, the, the pipes are put underground before they're actually used, and the equipment is put on top of them, and it's kind of closed off and cleaned up, and it stays in kind of a construction state for a long period of time. Can you, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, Ken. Again, good afternoon. I appreciate being here, everyone. To answer your question, because we're following FPNL.
If you could, we're, we're live, so if you can just kind of get closer to the mic or move the, the mic should move.
I apologize.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Because we're following FPNL, and we're in the second stage of, you know, following FPNL behind, we go out and we start our, I'm sorry, our construction. And because we, the lines that we're doing, we're introducing a new fiber optic cable, so we're changing the design, we're upgrading our network. So, in doing so, we cannot piecemeat it, where we do a block, put it on the ground, and then come back in and pull the cables, because our fiber travels for quite a distance. So, we have to run the new fiber, get all that infrastructure in before we go ahead and activate the new network.
Okay. And what, what, when residents ask, and they do, rightfully so, you know, how long do we, should we expect to see this kind of construction look? What, what is the normal turnaround time for that? I'm sure it varies, but just to give us an idea of what the expectation should be.
It is, it does vary. So, the first phase that we are working on, which is on the west side of the 75, we're looking to complete that phase by mid-November. It will be 100% completed.
Okay.
With the activation and all restorations.
Okay. All right. And there's still work on the east side as well, right?
That is going to be the next phase for Comcast, but we cannot start until FPNL completes their work before we can go ahead and start doing our engineer work and get the designs done for that phase.
Perfect. Okay. Great. Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
If you guys don't mind. You guys are in front of my house right now, in my whole street. I get an overhead line, just walk me through this, so I can explain it to everybody who asked me. I get it off of the concrete poles right now into my house, and then it, it, the underground line comes to the corner of my property. Where, how is the connection made? Is it still going to be overhead to, to my house from the concrete pole fed in, or is it going to go underground to my house? How does that work?
If FPNL's removing the poles, we cannot be on those poles anymore. So, we're going to take our network that's on the joint-use pole with FPNL and put everything on the ground. So, our main distribution is going to go on the ground, and the overhead line, the laterals that was feeding your home, we also have to introduce an underground drop that's going to be coming to the side of your home. So, everything will be on the ground, nothing will be on the poles anymore.
Okay. Good answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I got kind of an unrelated question, but I'm waiting for something here. Now, where I live, I, I'm not a subscriber to anything with Comcast, but one of your lines going across Southwest 136th fell, and it was laying in the street.
Okay.
And I called to report a line down, and it kept asking me for an account number, and I didn't have an account number. So, I ended up just taking some nails and tying it up to the pole until one day I saw one of your service techs coming by, and I flagged them down, and I said, listen, I can't get hold of anybody over there. They require me to have an account number. And can you at least cut this thing down? He eventually did. But I think that's a, maybe a customer service issue, that your phone tree, a fault with it, that requires an account number for somebody to report a line down, because that's what they required for me to do.
So, we have been told that before, that it's hard to get through our IVR. So, we are looking into that to reassess the options to get through to a live agent. But if you have a line down, please let Russell know. He has my cell phone number, he has my email.
I should have it.
He could report it directly to me.
I should have it, too.
You should all have it.
And then also, in Sunshine Ranches, it's been over a year, and there's red cables that are still sticking up, and they haven't put even the green boxes over them. When is that going to be facilitated?
So, that's the underground section that I mentioned earlier. Those are the conduits. That's not the cables. So, that's a conduit, the new conduit on the ground that we just placed.
Right.
So, as soon as we get the other sections tied in where we can have continuity, then we'll pull the new fibers and get those activated and set the pedestal, finish the restoration.
Okay. So, you're just waiting for more infrastructure to be.
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did it help?
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah. I have a couple of questions for you. I'm so happy to hear you're getting off COAX and going to fiber finally. Yay. I'm an IT guy.
There you go.
So, since the pandemic, tons of people work from home. There's three of us in my house, and I know probably half my neighborhood that are, you know, work, work from home now. What kind of notification do you give people so they can plan their vacation around the outage that's coming for however long? It's coming for however long. So if you're coming down a street, how do you let the people know that they're going to not have internet for a period of time?
Okay, so the work that we're currently doing, we're not causing any outages. We're not taking.
Well, you're pulling cable right now. I get that. But sooner or later, you're going to tie them in. Is it going to be invisible to the people or are they going to be down for a day or two or three?
So once the new infrastructure is activated and ready to go, there's going to be notifications that's going to be sent via text messages. We're going to be posting signs with a QR code to let everyone know that we're ready to start doing the activation on the new network.
How long in advance though, so I can either plan, you know, so people can plan to be in the office or make other alternatives to work because I'm tied to my desk at home?
We're going to be sending those notifications out within two weeks.
Okay.
Giving everybody ample time so we'll have access to the property.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
As a follow-up that I had for the thing sticking out of the ground, are they just going to be sitting there, sticking out of the ground? Because, you know, we got horses that are riding along, especially in Sunshine Ranches and Rolling Oaks a lot. And I can see how those could be adverse to the equestrians that are riding up and down the streets.
Again, based on how you just phrased the question, being at a safety, I can go ahead and have those cut down, flush mounted, set a vault until we come back to finish it and then we'll set the.
I really appreciate that. Thank you. My horse, my horse people appreciate it too.
No problem.
Right, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. So Ed, I'm going to cut you off just because people online can't hear you. So I'm just going to, Ed was just saying that he gets a, and actually I've got the same thing. I've been getting them last like three nights. They've been telling me they've been doing the work at night and then I get a text first thing in the morning, are you back online? And I can say one or two, yes or no. And so, but the work, you know, has not actually interrupted us at all. I guess they do it in the middle of the night, which is awesome. So they do have, they do have that facility and Ed, it sounds like you have the same, same thing. So that's great. All right. Any other, any other comments from the council? I am going to, I see some hands going up for the residents. Let's go through all these and then we'll have a time for a quick question and answer afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, before, before they sit down, can, Dawn, would you please approach and Rick? Could you just, just at the lectern there, just advise people, what number should they call if they have an issue with? Just, I guess, general customer service issues and then if there's an issue as it relates to restoration efforts? So, you know, these issues that the Vice Mayor brought up about, you know, maybe lines in the horse trail or other issues, where should they call? Because I'm sure it's a different number.
Sure. So general customer service, they should call the 954 or the 1-800 Comcast to get through to our call center. When we're doing the undergrounding construction in your neighborhoods, we're door tagging the homes with a QR code which will get you directly into a database to log your complaint and it goes directly to Rick's department. And they're looking at that every day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
AT&amp;T?
Representative from AT&amp;T?
Yep.
Why don't you come on up? Thank you for coming out this evening.
Good evening. My name is Vic Benenati. I'm the Government Affairs Person for AT&amp;T for Broward County. And Russell, I appreciate the invitation. I've run into a lot of friends here. I'll answer one of the questions right now and that is, Russell and I and my technical folks, we talk all the time. So you can always go with a problem, let Russell know. He knows how to get me on my two cell phones 24/7. But we have a general number that you could call, 1-800-288-2020. And whether it's a service problem or whatever, you know, that's the general number that you can call with AT&amp;T. 1-800-288-2020. And I suggest a lot of times, go through Russell, he'll get me, you know, he has all my technical people. In today's environment, it's a strange world. I'm 77, I have 52 years with Bell South AT&amp;T. In the old environment, we were, we're a monopoly. We're not a monopoly anymore. Our plans on undergrounding is we're going to stay right where we're at. Okay, we're not going underground. We'll stay on the pole. And why? The reason is we don't have a way to recoup the cost for that. And sometimes I find it difficult to keep up with all the different companies that are in competition with us. Dawn and Comcast, I describe us as very friendly competitors. And there are a lot of companies like that. So we will not change or move where we are. And we just don't have a means to recoup the cost on that. But I'm available through Russell 24/7. If you have issues, some of the people in the audience I've known longer than I want to admit and some of, some of those people are very direct and will call me, you know, whatever time. So I welcome the calls. At 77, I'm here for one reason. I enjoy the job. It's fun. And I don't want to sit at home and watch TV. So if y'all have a problem, call me, call Russell, talk to our techs and would love the opportunity to try to help you. Y'all have any questions?
Great. Thank, thank you for coming out. So does that mean that those poles will stay up? Is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we found, I live in Fort Lauderdale. There's a permit guy there that turned into being a friend. He called me a while back and he said, will you go up by 62nd and Imperial Point? Okay, there's a wire hanging down there, way down by a bus stop where you could almost grab it. So I went up there and I checked and I had our technical people check. It wasn't ours. I don't think it belonged to anyone in this room, but it was there. And in this environment, sometimes that happens. Most of the work that we do, we end up going through Russell or his permit people and we know that way. But, you know, the good news is you have choices. The bad news is sometimes it's a little frustrating. It's difficult to find out exactly who's involved. So it's a good news, bad news story. My wife told me if we didn't do something, where she, she's a semi-retired CPA attorney. She said she'd go with brand X and I said, oh, please don't do that. So that's the world we're in today. It's changed a lot since 72 when I went to work.
Right, right.
But look forward to trying to help you out and work with you.
Perfect.
Any questions?
I got a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Vic, I have a question for you. So we heard from, I think it was FPNL, that the poles in town are either owned by AT&amp;T or FPNL. I get that you guys are going to want to keep your poles up because you don't have a way to recoup any costs to bury the cable. What are you going to do when the FPNL poles are coming down?
Yeah, I had, I didn't know that and I checked it out. It seems like if there are a million poles in Florida, FPNL and AT&amp;T, we don't trust each other. So we try to keep the pole count even, you know, 500,000, 500,000. If they move off, my understanding is the pole will revert to us from, if it's a FPNL pole today. But periodically, we have people who go out and they verify and they sweep the state every few years. And we get a pole camp, we reconcile. And if they have more poles than AT&amp;T does, we compensate them for it or vice versa. So the pole's staying there, the AT&amp;T wire is staying there. And, you know, the good news is, have great relationships with Comcast, with Dawn, had great relationships with Ben and I look forward to working with his replacement. It's a, it's friendly competition.
Very good. Good. Yeah, David.
Hey, I got one question. From Southwest 136th Ave, heading east on Luray, Luray Road. There is, I see a line hanging down and it's very thin. So I don't think it's electric and I don't think it's Comcast. But it's very thin and it's just hanging there. It's about maybe an eighth to a quarter mile east of 136th Ave on Luray Road.
If you can. It always helps if you can take a cell phone picture, okay, and send that to Russell. And again, my last real job, I had all the outside people in Dade County 42 years ago. Today, I see things and I can't tell, is that ours? Is that Comcast? Is that XYZ? But if you'll take a picture of it, send an address, send it to Russell, we'll check it out. And it may be AT&amp;T or it may not be.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Vic, did you know Freddie Fisickelli? He was a lineman for Bell South and AT&amp;T and all the rest.
Yeah, he probably at one time, at one time I had all the outside people here. And I knew of Freddie, but I really didn't know him personally. But he was on the, you know, we talked before the meeting, Bob and I talked. And, you know, Freddie was there and I used to work for a guy named Nelson, Charlie Nelson. And his son was a commissioner here.
Freddie's picture's on the wall over here.
As is his son, Jeff Nelson.
Yep, yep, Jeff.
All right.
He ain't here a long time. We have a lot of friends that live here.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're good. I'm going to open it up. I do want to be brief because we've got extended meeting. We've got more presentation. But is there someone that has a pressing question that wants to get up and say something? Yeah, go ahead.
To Comcast, three days before Christmas, this coming Christmas, it will be two years since you dug up my yard three days before Christmas. And to say I was not thrilled is an understatement when I've been cleaning like a maniac because everybody's coming and you're digging up out front as quick as I can clean inside. Two years ago, they told us that you would be back the week after Christmas and re-sod the mess you made in our yard and our swell. You didn't do that, so my husband did. Those red cable holders that you put in our front yard are still those red cable holders and they've been like that. It will be two years, three days before Christmas. In Rolling Oaks in comparison, I saw a truck that as soon as they put in, they had a flatbed something that you parked in somebody's swell to kill the grass, but they, it was full of green plastic containers. And as soon as the red things came out of the ground, another crew came and put the green plastic container. Well, I live in David's neighborhood that he talked about and horses ride up and down. And you have some of them this high out of the ground, some of them tied together with cable ties, but it's a mess. And then to Florida Power and Light, you told me in my yard that I didn't have one of those big ugly green boxes that weighs 650 pounds. But you told me if I hosted this, y'all would be coming along and taking down that nasty pole that's in my yard. And now after Mr. Benetti's presentation, I get to host that ugly green box that weighs 650 pounds and the pole. And the other thing is all of you need to do something about those metal boxes, especially at Hancock and Luray. You got a half a dozen of them there. They're ugly, moldy, you don't clean them. I see tamarack, hollywood, pimber pines. They have all sorts of, they're painted or some kind of, I don't know, decal that's put on there. But it's, we're tired of looking in Sunshine Ranches at ugly ones and other towns have pretty ones. Thank you.
Jim Laskey, 188th Avenue. I see Mr. Duncan over there in the audience. Mr. Duncan and I have a relationship I want to talk to you about. All right? Mr. Duncan came down 188th and we talked about elevations of transformers. There's 25,000 volts running right down in front of my house and it's aluminum cable. It has more of a tendency to go to ground than copper cable. You know, in China, the infrastructure is constructed with copper cable. Jeff Curry, commodities analyst with Goldman Sachs, recently said, they have the right idea, okay? But in the United States, we're worried about doing things cheap. Everybody that's lived in the ranches all their life has had problems with, with their power going from the pole in the prior years, okay, to the meter with grounding out your service. You want us now buy an insurance policy. Well, already my cable was replaced once by Florida Power and Light. It shorted out, okay? It was replaced, but now I got to buy an insurance policy to cover the potential. What, so you're just transferring all the liability of that hardening process to the homeowner. Why do I want to buy an insurance policy? It also covers my water line, which I don't, I have a water line, but it's my own water line. And you're going to fix a PVC, PVC pipe on top of it, I guess. But, you know, there's some things we've never gotten straightened out. You know, the federal government, okay, calls out the height of your electrical appliances. I think you need to review that and the town needs to review and require that the minimum should be the floor height of the house. Whatever that elevation is, that should be the height for a guideline. And it's simple. You have a little laser, you shoot the front door of the house, you got the elevation. And by the way, you don't have to worry about stepping into a puddle and getting electrocuted.
Thank you, Jim.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Cohen on Luray Road. This is to Vic, AT&amp;T. Vic, we have AT&amp;T Wi-Fi service at our home. We've had technicians out frequently, generally because the signal is so weak, we have trouble. I've had to purchase an extender to make sure we get the signal better into our house. But an extender only extends the poor quality of the signal. We've been told multiple times that the signal is so weak in this area because the lines are very old and frail and, and break easily. There needs to be a new line installed. Is that on the horizon?
Jeff, in a perfect world, AT&amp;T would replace all the copper wires today. But we're not in a perfect world. The cost to do that and even getting the fiber. But I had a commissioner call the other day and said they were having problems with Wi-Fi inside the home. I live in a 55 home with solid walls. And with that, they tested my line, they tested the commissioner's line. The signal was fine to the home. The problem was inside the home, it didn't go through.
That's not our problem. We have a weak signal in the whole area. Okay. The lines are fraying and very old. I'm told they need to new lines in to get better service.
Well, if y'all could send me a, you know, Lori Parish, Jeff Parish, you know, an address, Cohen. I'm used to Lori being my boss. And with the band number, the billing address number, we'll look into it. Again, if we, if we had the power to do it, we'd replace it all tomorrow. I don't know what the plan is where y'all live, but be glad, try to look into it.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment?
I forgot to give a compliment. From the minute we signed the permission slip to Florida Power and Light, till they were done and through and everything was less than a year and our cable was underground and everything.
Great, thank you. All right. Well, thank you all for coming out. This has been very helpful. It's been something we've been wanting to do for a while. It's something that certainly has been on the minds of our residents and they have, they're asking us questions and we want to be able to have the right answers and have it so we can be as transparent as possible with the whole process that's going on. So it's exciting to see the progress that we're making and, and we're looking forward to when it's all done. But thank you all for coming out. Appreciate it. All right. We have another guest with us this evening. Senator Geller, thank you for your patience this evening and we appreciate you coming out.
And Commissioner Parish, they told you, Lori, Lori? They told you that they would fix it after Christmas. They never said what year.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, where's Vice Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the commission. I'm Steve Geller. I'm your county commissioner. I represent approximately half of Southwest Ranches. I represent Dykes Road East. I used to represent all of it and anytime anybody in Southwest Ranches has any concern, I don't look as to which side of Dykes Road you live on, so feel free to contact me. Let me bring you up on, up to date on a couple of issues and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all have. First, as I have said here before, and I want to just give a quick update on my highest priority in my last eight years on the county commission has been the creation of high-paid jobs here in Broward County. And I think we've been pretty successful in that. There's two points I want to talk about. There's two points I want to talk about. Number one, y'all have heard me talk previously about bringing the film industry back here to Broward. Well, the new film studio, which has moved to Broward because of our efforts, has just signed a contract with Google to be their producer of Google AI films. So that will be bringing hundreds of high-paid jobs, typically six-figure jobs, to Broward County. The other thing that I've been concentrating on in job creation, or one of the other things, is the building trades. A lot of people, 125% of parents are telling their kids that they have to go to college. It's an exaggeration. You can't have over 100%. But the real number is 93%. And what we've been, what I've been trying to show is that there are a whole lot of other high-paid jobs. If you are a union electrician or heavy equipment operator, if you're working 50 hours a week five years after you get your journeyman's license, you're probably earning $100,000 or $125,000 a year. And those are jobs among the few remaining jobs that still have pensions. Those jobs are not outsourcable to other countries. People don't have to worry about piling up large amount of college debt to get their degree in art history and where they can be the best cultured and educated waitresses at the Cheesecake Factory. And so I've been pushing very hard to create more jobs in the building trades. I hold quarterly meetings where we bring together the unions, the private contract, the associate builders and contractors, which are the non-union subcontractors, the GCs, subs, Boys and Girls Club, so many different, the public schools, the vocational schools, et cetera. And just the fact that we bring them together, talking to each other, has been very helpful. Let me move on to the next topic because I'm hoping to do all of this in about 10 to 15 minutes most. Y'all may have been reading about our minor dispute with BSO on our budget. You should be aware that this has the potential to seriously affect your taxes. The sheriff has come to us requesting a 48% increase in his budget. Public safety, in my opinion, is the single most important duty of government. Government has a duty to protect its citizens. However, that is not the only duty of government. The sheriff historically, and I'm going back to 2007, 2008 is the base year because that was the last year before the Great Recession, was around 50 and 1/2% of the money left to the county after we, after you take out the enterprise funds, which can only be used there, the bonded indebtedness, the other county constitutional officers. We're left with this year, $1.385 billion. The sheriff this year is 53.7% of our money and the county agencies are 46.3%. To give the sheriff his requested budget would take him up to 93% of our dollars, which would mean that we would essentially have to shut the rest of government, mental health facilities, environmental, our environmental department, our planning department, our affordable, I mean, if we take him to 93% of our budget. So, I mean, we just can't do that. He's threatening to take us to the governor and cabinet. If we don't, there is a disconnect where these days, remember, the county commission has to raise taxes and the sheriff gets to spend money and complain, you're not giving me enough. But he doesn't have to raise any money. We have to raise it, he gets to spend it, and then he complains we're too cheap. As I said, there's just no way we're going to give him what he's asking for if he wants to go to the governor and cabinet and ask them to make us. I will follow Florida law. I will do what they tell us. It will be the last you ever see politically of Ron DeSantis. It will be the last you ever see politically of Ashley Moody or of Wilton Simpson and Jimmy Petronas, the four cabinet members, if they in fact order the largest property tax increase in the history of the state of Florida. I don't believe they're going to do that because it's just, he's asking for a ridiculous sum of money. We have given him over, his employees, he's complaining about, for example, corrections department, that, oh, there are nine counties in Florida paying more than Broward is. I pointed out, well, Sheriff, there's 67 counties in the state. So if there's nine paying more and you take Broward out, that means 57 are paying less. We're in the top 15%. You want to give a small increase? Fine, we can do that. We can't make them the highest paid employees in the state like you're asking. And we have been given, the sheriff's deputies, sheriff's department budget for salary has gone up each year for the last seven or eight years, 8%. And that doesn't include their seniority bonuses. Our non-law enforcement, non-BSO sheriff's employees have been going up at 4.5%. I mean, we just cannot keep giving them not only higher numbers every year, but a higher percentage of our budget each year. It's just not doable. And the sheriff, we're just reminding him, the reason he has so many employees is the county has hired him to run the county jail. The county has hired him to do dispatch. The county has hired him to do fire. The county has hired him to provide law enforcement at the airport and seaport. But what the county giveth, the county can take it away. Remember, 99% plus of Broward County is incorporated, meaning the sheriff does not have primary law enforcement. He is, there's about between 16,000 and 18,000 people in the entire county in unincorporated areas. I mean, we don't want to threaten, but if he's threatening us, we have the ability to threaten back. We just cannot give all of our money to law enforcement. By the way, what's the largest fleet of helicopters in the state of Florida of any law enforcement agency? We don't think so. Climate change. Y'all have heard me talk about the sea level rise and how this is affecting particularly Southwest Ranches and West Broward. The problem is our climate here is, depending on where in Broward you are, is either tropical rainforest or tropical monsoon. Those are the technical terms. Either way, it means it rains a lot and Jim Allbritton's on our water board, county water board, and has heard us discuss this many times. So what is happening, all of this area that you live in used to be Everglades. And what happened is in the 50s, 40s, 50s, and up through, I think it was 61, but it could have been 60, they built all of these giant, the Army Corps of Engineers built all these giant canals. And these, there's one right here outside across the street. And these giant canals collect water from the small canals and drain out to the ocean. And that's worked fine as long as inland water is here and ocean water is here because they're all gravity fed. You know what's been happening to the ocean water? In approximately 10, 11 years, according to all of our projections, they'll be like this. What that means is, now that's at high tide, but that means every time it rains, we won't be able to drain. In three or four more years after that, ocean water will be higher than inland water, meaning the water will be coming in. We know how to fix that and I do have some good news. You've heard me before say, my advice to you is to buy arcs and houseboats. We actually think we may have a solution now. We've always known how to fix it. The problem is the cost of fixing it. It's going to cost, last I heard, was somewhat over a billion, billion and a half dollars. But that's for all of Southeast Florida. What we've done is Broward County has allocated $3.5 million to do a study. And we've got the South Florida Water Management District to match that. When I say a study, I mean the required engineering study. We know how to fix it. You have to do three things. You have to build big, giant, much taller salinity control barriers. Then you need big, giant pumps to pump over the salinity control barriers. And then you need to build up the walls or the berms along the canals because otherwise it'll just flood over the seawall. Broward is the only county in Southwest Florida that's aggressively taken the lead here. The Army, we just heard earlier this week, actually, we just heard earlier this week that the undersecretary of the Army has recommended that because Broward and the South Florida Water Management District have agreed to pay for the cost of the engineering study, that he is recommending to the secretary of the Army, and this is the undersecretary, that he is recommending to the Army that this be included in their budget just to fix Broward because we're the only county that's offered to pay. So for our $3.5 million matched by $3.5 million from the Army Corps, excuse me, from South Florida Water Management District, we're hoping to get the $300, $400, $500 million that it will take. Now, it's still going to need to get in the budget. I've discussed this with Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz. She's advocated that she will forcefully push for this. If we're able to get into the secretary of the Army's recommended budget, which the undersecretary has recommended, it still has to go through Congress, but if they fund that, we have found a solution that will fix this. Now, it's going to take years and years for them to finish the study and do the construction, but at least we know a way to fix it and it looks like that'll be approved. The, I wanted to quickly discuss riding trails over at, over at Treetops Park. That's in the town of Davie, not your fair city. And I live in between here and Treetops. I live in Embassy Lakes and Cooper City. So just head right down Griffin Road and then you have to head to Sterling. The county has been planning on removing a lot of the invasive trees there in conjunction with Florida Department of Transportation. The mayor of Davie, Judy Paul, who as you know is a very big course person, has contacted my office on multiple occasions. I've arranged meetings with Dan West, our county parks director. And I'm going to be having a meeting probably in the next, you know, certainly before the end of this year, but in the next presumably 60 days. I have, I am, I've told Davie, I let them know, but I will also let Russell know about this, where the county park has agreed that when they do remove the invasives, they're going to be replacing it with other trees and they will in fact be upgrading the park for riding trails instead of damaging the park for riding trails. And I know that's important here in Southwest Ranches. And as I said, I've had at least three meetings between Davie and the parks director on that. Final issue, I know that nobody cares about this, but I wanted to discuss the waste to energy and the proposed plant in Southwest Broward. As I said last time I was here, I have to be careful that I don't say, because all of you know that if there's a zoning hearing, I have to say that I haven't made up my mind yet and I'm prepared to listen to the evidence. So I will say, if there's a zoning hearing, I haven't made up my mind yet and I will listen to the evidence. And if somebody can convince me somehow that it's a good idea, I'll think about it. I will follow the law. But thus far, I've seen no evidence that it's a good idea. And that's all I think I can legally say without having to recuse myself. And you don't want me to recuse myself on that vote. And by the way, I can say this, I have no intention, I've just been re-elected, and I have been in office either Florida House, Florida Senate, mayor of Broward, county commission in the 80s, 90s, 2000s, 2010s, and now the 2020s. And I have no intention of ever being on the ballot again. So I no longer have to say, well, you know, have to be careful because the voters might not, I'm telling you what I actually think because I'm never going to be in front of the voters again. So, but I have said before that I have concerns, not that they couldn't be overcome by competent substantial evidence in the record. I believe, where's your lawyer? Okay, I believe I used the code, I believe I used the code words, competent substantial evidence in the record could convince me. Let's see if that happens. I have met with Ronnie and Lonnie Bergeron, who as you know, I think are strongly on your side on this issue. And I have opined that it doesn't seem fair that Southwest Broward, which the current burner, the Wheelabrader site, which is south of State Road 84 at 441, also in Southwest Broward, it doesn't seem fair to me that Southwest Broward would have two burners, one there and one down here. But again, if competent substantial evidence, you know what I'm saying. I think that what we need to do, and I've told you this before, is we have to concentrate on recycling. It appears to me, and Steve, Mr. Mayor, I believe you are on the Solid Waste Authority? Okay. The Solid Waste Authority is having a meeting on September 18th in, which I think is this week, in Water Hill.
Right.
From 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Veterans Park in Water Hill. Veterans Park, meeting room 3, 7600 Northwest 50th Street to take input. We had hoped to have the report from the Solid Waste Authority by, originally November was the date. Currently, we're hoping for sometime early in 2025. County's not going to make up its mind what to do until we receive the report of the Solid Waste Authority. But it is my current belief, could change, but it is my current belief that you politically cannot put a new waste to energy site in Southwest Broward. Politically, I don't see how you can put it, expand the Northwest Broward site enough because the neighbors all around there are complaining. We could put one additional burner out at the Wheelabrader site. It currently has, I believe, three. We could add one to it. And that's a possibility. But my prediction, even though it's not environmentally good, after we dramatically increase our recycling, which I think everybody agrees we need to do, after we further investigate the possibility of composting and seeing what we can do there, after we do all of these things, we're still going to end up need to be sending a good portion of our waste up to Okeechobee. I just don't see politically any alternative to that. Is that the best thing to do environmentally? No. Is it the only thing that I can see feasibly being done? Yes. And my hope is that if we can reach an 80% recycling, we can avoid that. But I don't know of any communities in Florida, or very few in this country, that reach 80% recycling without counting waste to energy. But we'll do everything we can and if we still have to send more up to Okeechobee, let's see if we can minimize to the maximum extent possible what would have to go there. And the last thing I wanted to say is, as you know, I am the only county commissioner that invites all of you, including the city manager and the city attorney, to lunch every year. My next luncheon is on October 1 at Long Key Park in Davie. I will be paying for lunch to have, again, I invite, I represent five cities, so it's cheaper than pre-reapportionment when I had seven cities. I will have the county administrator there. I will have the county transit people there. I will have the Surtax head there and several, probably the parks chair there. And the purpose that I do is so that you, the elected officials, you and I represent the same people. That's why I have town meetings twice a year in every town I represent. I don't have them here, but that's because I come speak to you twice a year. So nobody can ever say, they don't have a chance to talk to me or give me their opinions, but I need to hear from you what I can do to help you. And but I need to hear from you what I can do to help you and make sure that the top county staff is here, so when you have requests, you can have the top staff there to respond. And again, all of the commissioners, the city manager, and the city attorney in each of these cities, the five cities I represent are invited. I have completed my remarks. Depending on how long you take in questions, I may still get to see some of the Dolphins game. I thought your meeting was at seven, not seven thirty. So, do y'all have any questions?
Thank you, thank you for coming out. And I'm already signed up for your luncheon, so I'm looking forward to that. So that's great, great, thank you. It has been a long night already. If there are any questions, if we can just be brief on those, that would be good. I don't know, I'm, it's, you know, I can dream the impossible dream. All right, Mary Ann, come on up. No, Mary Ann, you need to come up to them tonight, please, sorry.
Thank you, Senator Geller, that was awesome. I even learned stuff tonight, thank you. So just some of the questions, I know when we had Ronnie here with, with the sun, they had up to ninety percent recycling when they were operating, and waste management, since they took over, were under sixty percent. So we do know we can get it over to eighty, okay? That is doable. The other thing is, you said that the Wheelabrader was a possible area, but did you know that out of every ton that they burn, one third of that becomes toxic ash? And now they don't know what to do with it, okay? They're trying to bury it in landfills, which now is taking up space from landfills. It's, the landfill liner leaks, and it gets into the groundwater, which is toxic. So there's two hundred feet high ash by the Wheelabrader over several acres, and they're thinking about maybe increasing it because the airplanes don't like it because they might hit it at some point. So they don't know what to do with the toxic ash. And some of the comments are zero waste isn't zero, but what is incineration? A third of it creates toxic ash, which also goes into the landfill, which we really don't want. So that was my comment. Thank you.
And let me respond to those. Actually, I knew the, each of the issues that you raised. First, I don't think it's quite a third that creates ash. I believe it's closer to twenty-five or thirty percent, but your numbers are very close, whether it's twenty-five or thirty or thirty-three, we're talking same order of magnitude. One of the things that is being discussed, you may be familiar with some discussions about building a rail line along U. S. Twenty-seven. You've heard about that. I don't know if that's ever going to occur. I don't, I believe that that is governed under federal law, and I'm sure the county has very little ability to do anything on that. But one of the issues that we would, we have to talk about, and disposing of the, of the ash is a problem, but if nothing else is possible, we will probably have to truck the ash up to the landfill in Okeechobee County, which in Okeechobee County, they have massive, one of the largest job creators is the landfill there. It's not a very prosperous county, and they're more than happy to take the ash. I don't like sending waste up there for several reasons. Number one, the amount currently has to be trucked. The amount of fossil fuel is going into the trucks to go from Broward to Okeechobee County is very substantial. Secondly, the amount of methane admitted, emitted by landfills, it wouldn't come from the ash, but when you send household garbage waste, they're currently emitting a massive amount of, of methane, which we don't like. So that's why we're concentrating on doing as much recycling. I'm not sure that the Bergerons ever, I have not, they, I know that they've made claims. I have not seen any, any proof that they were ever at ninety percent, but what I did is I brought with me our top county experts on recycling and had them have an initial meeting with me out at the Bergeron's place right off of twenty-seven, and I know that they are in discussions to see what they can do because, again, I think the single most important thing that we can do is reduce the amount of waste. And again, that's through recycling, composting, burning where necessary, and reduce the amount to try and avoid putting as much as possible into the landfills. So I think I answered all of your points.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anybody else after Jim? Okay, Jim, you're going to be the last.
Mr. Geller, it's very refreshing to hear what you had to say tonight. I was very suspect of your, some of your positions in the past, but let me throw a couple more arrows into the subject, all right? We have technology now that's increasing ten times every six months. We have cameras that can identify eighty-nine different items in the waste stream. We can literally, and we got robots, and robots can build robots, and robots can possess the same type of knowledge as some of these cameras do. So we could deconstruct a landfill theoretically, and probably in six months, you'll start to see it happen. Already, we've got cameras on the garbage haulers, okay? The garbage haulers bought the cameras, and there's a couple different manufacturers of these cameras. So we've got all kinds of technology in our field. I spoke to you earlier tonight about our composting effort that we want to do just fifty miles north of here, thirty-two thousand acres of farmland, and that number came from Lonnie. I had no idea how much farmland was up there, but we have addressable markets that's so huge that could be so profitable. But not only that, a lot of people that don't live in Broward County live up around that lake that are underserved, that could really use a twenty dollar an hour job. So there's so many synergies that the state should even go along with it without a question. But the, the department, or the, 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 what is it? The Environmental Protection Agency of the state says, under a preponderance of evidence, and I think we got that now, okay? We can start to do things like that. All we need is the backing of a county, which is you, okay? And a municipality, which is them, okay? We need to get started on this thing. It's too simple not to try it, and if the, the facility is already there and existing and permitted, all we want to do is add one more permit for the food waste. That's all we want to do.
Thank you, Jim.
And everybody will be rolling.
Thank you, Jim.
Fifty miles north of here is not in Broward County, Florida. So whatever county that is in, Palm Beach, Okeechobee, Hendry, I have no idea which, what county that is, but I do know fifty miles north of here isn't Broward. So you would need permissions from that local government to do it. When people have come to me, because I chaired the South Florida Regional Planning Council, we had at my direction a all-day workshop. One was on solid waste. A second one, a year later, was specifically on recycling. So, I mean, we've been doing a lot of things at my direction on this, but what we have been told is that at this point in time, because I've asked them to investigate commercial composting, our staff has said that there is no facility yet in this country composting at the level that it would take to do this, and they want to see what we can do, you know, do more studies, see commercial composting in some of the mid-sized facilities, and they're looking at that. But to do all of our, or most of our solid waste there, you have all sorts of problems with critters, with smell. If you think you don't want to live next to a landfill, you certainly don't want to live that close to a composting facility because those will smell much worse. So we're, we're looking at all of this, and, you know, if they'd been looking at it ten years ago, we might not be in the situation we are in now, but we are looking at it now, as I've explained. Let me ask if there's any commissioner, mayor, or staff that has any question. If not, I'm going to go watch the Dolphins.
Yeah, I just have one or two for you, Senator. Thanks for coming out tonight. So I'll add to your to-do list, because I know you don't, you have some empty space on it. So over the last thirty years, I've been, I've been compiling literally tons of junk in my garage, and I made a commitment to my wife to, before we had our own methane problems, start taking it over to the county dump. And we've had this pointed out by residents that are engaged in our zero-waste program as well. What's going on there is, it's just wanton disposal of you name it. There's literally tons of recyclables going in there. When I go in there, I'd love to pull the plywood out and bring it home. I can't bring anything home, according to my wife, but.
She sounds like my wife.
Yeah. There's tons of green debris in there that could be put off on the side and recycled through the various processes. There's, you know, they, they take out the white equipment, you know, refrigerators, washing machines, et cetera. That goes off to the side, but when I go up there, I am just absolutely shocked at how much recyclable is there. Now, we've been up to Palm Beach County, and I've also been up to Kissimmee. They have transfer stations before anything goes to the dump. You know, all those, that line that's out to Sheridan Street in the morning for people waiting to dump, they don't, they don't go up on the hill in these other counties. They dump into a facility that then sorts it. And I mean, there's got to be money in that. To Jim's point, so much of this stuff is recyclable now, automated recycling. I don't know if there's, I know the, the Solid Waste Authority is, this is hopefully part of the big plan, but this is something that the county can be, with your, your solid waste experts, looking at resolving now rather than continuing to fill some very expensive land over there.
What the county is doing is, as I said some time ago, we're waiting to see the report of the Solid Waste Authority before we, you know, that was supposed to be completed this November. We understand now we're looking at early twenty twenty-five, but we're studying these. We have, I've been told that we have roughly doubled over the last five years the amount that we recycle. Still not nearly enough. One of the biggest things we need to do is provide better education to, to people. That's going to be part of a fairly expensive, assuming we have any money left and the sheriff doesn't take all of it, but that's got to be part of a fairly expensive educational thing, telling people, you know, don't throw the, what we used to call Saran Wrap or press and seal, that's not a recyclable plastic, it just gums up the works, don't do it. Don't throw the oily pizza boxes in with the paper, you know, don't, we're probably going to need to go to dual or triple stream recycling and teach people all of this. But we've already, over the last five years, made significant strides, and I'm waiting to see the report of the Solid Waste Authority, because this is something that we have spent a lot of time and muddy in backing, and as I said, I have worked with the Bergerons.
Good, yeah, working with W. M., we put a PSA together for our residents on the do's and don'ts.
I've seen it, that was very good.
Yeah, we're trying.
Anyone else?
Anything else?
Yeah, I, I got a few questions. Anybody else have questions? Anybody else? Gary?
It's up to you, David.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming out this evening. Let me go backwards with your, on the topics, the waste to energy, energy facility, and you had mentioned a zoning in progress. Can you?
There is no zoning in progress.
Oh, there's nothing?
No, there is no plan right now, but I don't want to have to recuse myself if at some point in the future, somebody files a plan to rezone that property, I don't want to be forced to recuse myself. So I have said everything on that that I can without having to recuse myself.
Okay, well, going back April twenty-seventh of last year, Beam Fur and Gregory Ross came here, and they were talking about the solid waste, and that was the first exposure we had to the possibility of an incinerator. And since then, we have citizens that are activating every municipality we possibly can. We have, southwest ranches has a solid waste task force of volunteers. In fact, Debbie's going to be talking about some changes with that tonight, okay? We have a solid waste advisory board, which is going through more recycling policies for our town. I would like to see Broward County do something like that.
We have all sorts of boards like that already. We have all sorts of boards, countywide boards like that. By the way, Commissioner Fur and I do not agree. Commissioner Fur at the commission has indicated that he thinks southwest Broward would be an appropriate location to put a waste to energy facility. I've indicated I do not believe that it would be an appropriate location. We have disagreed at the county level.
Okay. Is there anything that would be holding you back from introducing a resolution between the county commission, saying no incinerators in Broward, no more incinerators in Broward County?
We're not going to do anything until we get the report of the Solid Waste Authority, as I have indicated several times. We're expecting that report within a few months. We, that report consists of primarily municipal officials. I believe there is one county commissioner on it, and when they're done, it does require approval from both the board and the county, but we have been asked to not make any plans until we see the report, again, from a group that is almost entirely municipal officials with only one county commissioner on it.
Thank you, because I, I know our mayor has done a very, very fine job with educating the members of the executive board. Now, let's go to the next subject. You had mentioned the climate change issue.
Yes.
When you had mentioned bringing in the South Florida Water Management District, we also have here South Broward Drainage District and Central Broward Drainage District. Both of those drainage districts have different policies with regard to water retention. South Broward drained it off. Central Broward, we have to burn it in and keep it on our property until it percolates to the aquifer. I think those two entities need to be brought in to, to do this because those are two opposite types of policies, and I think those need to be considered in whatever policies you're going to develop with that.
The water management districts are created under Florida law. Any, the appointments, well, some of them are elected, some are appointed. The appointments are by the governor of the state of Florida. That's not a county issue. What I am concerned most about is our inability to drain when it rains, and Broward is the only county in South Florida that has taken the lead on this issue. I chair the Broward Water Board and have taken the lead in this area.
Softball question. What is the status of the R. M. and M. dollars from the transportation Surtax?
We, I have no idea really. They are, they are proceeding what, we have at your city ma, are you on the, you're on the board of the Broward County City Managers Association. What I have been pushing for, because I have been contacted by several city managers, is to ask that we, one of the issues, it's not in the maintenance and rehab, it's actually part of the new construction, that some of the smaller cities have applied for state and federal grants, but the problem is there is a ten percent match that the local cities have to come up with, and some of the smaller cities like you, but I specifically Oakland Park has raised this issue, some of the others, say, we can't afford the ten percent match. And I have asked the county to work with the City Managers Association, where the county can use Surtax money to pay the ten percent match on behalf of cities with populations under fifty thousand. Surprisingly, when the City Managers Association came back to the county with their list of requests, that wasn't on it. So I said, I want you to go back to the city managers and ask them why they would turn down free money from the county so that, for the match, and I believe that that, it has gone back to the City Managers Association. We are waiting to hear from that. I, there's many recommendations coming out of that. Your city manager can discuss that after I leave. One of them, I understand, is to eliminate the role of the MPO in coming up with the requested projects, and, but we are waiting, we are trying to work with the cities, and that's why I have requested specifically that we use some of the money for the matches, and I believe that the county will be very receptive to what we finally end up receiving from the City Managers Association. City Managers Association.
We have, we have a lot of shovel-ready projects, waiting for that money.
Well, and the problem is, you know, we need to get, right now, it's the MPO picking a lot of these, and, which is one of the reasons why, what the MPO does, and the reason a lot of cities wanted to get, do away with it, they'll pick four or five really big projects, and that will eat up all of the money. So, I think they're looking for a fairer way of distributing it, including more and smaller projects. But again, your city manager can comment.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead.
So, yeah, I just have a follow-up. I didn't make the MPO meeting today. I had a conflict during that timeframe. Um, you're saying they're looking at, so will the MPO just be there to pick the projects at the FDOT level?
I have, probably, I have not, I was briefed on this by county staff, but they have not yet received the written final recommendations of the Broward County City Managers Association as to how they would like the surtax language amended. We're not gonna do, I'm sure we're not gonna do all of it.
Sure.
But I expect that we will do, you know, a very substantial amount of what the city managers request, because I have specifically said I would like to get more money into the hands of the cities.
Right. Good. Thank you.
All right. Last question, um, having to do with your BSO.
Yes.
Um, as you're well aware, we, we are contracted with Davie.
Yes.
And Davie provides our law enforcement, they've done an excellent job, and our ambulance services, and our fire. Why should our residents have to subsidize Broward County Sheriff's Office expenses when they wouldn't even bid on our law enforcement contract?
Because it's countywide sheriff. Remember, the BSO only does one, less than 1% of the county where they are providing the primary work. Now, again, countywide, airport, seaport, those are, have to be paid countywide, and we have chosen to contract with the sheriff. We have to have 911 dispatch, and we have chosen to contract with the sheriff. We have to have, um, uh, fire, and we have chosen to contract with the sheriff. And, um, there's one other, oh, the, the county prison system. So, all of those are countywide expenses that are borne, but we think that they can be done dramatically less expensively if we take them away from the sheriff. But, you know, if he's willing to work with us, great, we're willing to work with him. But we cannot continue to give double the raises to his employees that the, the general county employees get. We just don't, cannot give him every year a higher percentage of our budget.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm aware that prior to Sheriff Ken Jenny, fire was not even with BSO.
I was contacted in the last 10 days by a local fire union chief who said, "Can you please take us back?"
There you go. That would, that would lessen the...
That's one of the issues we're looking at.
Cut it.
Okay. At this point in time, I think I've answered.
Thank you.
Jim, did you? Okay. It's been a pleasure to be here. I look forward to seeing all of you on October 1. And if there's anything that I can do, don't be a stranger. You know, I'm from the government, I'm here to help you.
Public comment.
Yes, Mayor, we have four speakers, Richard Ramcharchar, followed by Mary Ann.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members. Richard Ramcharchar, Southwest 166th Avenue. Um, I'd like to first, I represent Broward Clean Air, a grassroots organization that is opposed to any waste incineration or any similar technologies that burn, um, garbage. So, one of the things that we've been doing is to help educate policymakers and the community about the dangers of, um, waste incineration. And, um, you know, one of, Southwest Ranches is, is in a very sticky situation here, because we depend on our well water, um, most of the community does. And if they build an incinerator out here, we're looking at groundwater contamination and the possibility of us, um, having to resort to very expensive municipal, um, water infrastructure being built here. So, this is one of the reasons why I got into this, this fight, to help protect our environment, as well as to help protect our community from the dangers of incineration. I wanted to give you an update and let you know that, um, September 17th is the Miami-Dade County Board of County Commissioners meeting, and they will be considering four sites, which will be the Opa-locka Airport West, the Medley Site, which is an industrial area, Doral, where the original incinerator burned down. And there's a new site, a fourth one, which is a tree farm owned by Miami-Dade developer. And, um, on September 11th, um, a lot of the residents from Miramar, including, well, in the past, Mayor Wayne Messam, has said that they will be opposed to any incinerators being built close to the Broward County line. And Miramar is prepared to sue Miami-Dade County if they attempt to build any incinerators near to their community. So, they're opposed to both the Opa-locka West site, as well as the, um, the tree farm site that's being proposed now. In addition to that, the Sierra Club has hired a former City of Miami Commissioner Ken Russell to lobby against Miami-Dade County's plans to build the county's largest garbage incinerator. And the goal there is to educate the policymakers and the public, again, about waste incineration. So, we have to continue this, this fight here in Broward County for ourselves too, because it just really poses a, a serious threat to our way of life, our quality of life, as well as our health. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Yeah, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann. Next up after Mary Ann is Gay.
Mary Ann Allen, Mustangon, Appaloosa. So, public service announcement to all our equestrian and farm animals at the ranches. Uh, the vet has told me that they're losing, a lot of animals are dying, and they're dying because the heat is so intense, they're not getting enough cool water, they're not drinking enough, and possibly a lot of them are exposed to too much sun. According to the Florida statutes and law, if you have animals, you must provide them shade, whether it's a big tree, or a lean-to, or a shelter. You know, I'd like, um, people to report. If they see someone with animals and they have no shade, that's a Florida law. They must have shade. The other thing is, if you're an animal owner, please, you're by law required to put your name and your phone number on your property on the fence. If your animal is sick and someone sees it by the side of the road as they're driving by and it's in the field laying down, they can call the owner. Hey, you got an animal down. Then they can have, the police can contact the owner. But this way, we're blind. We don't know when animals get loose, we don't have people to call, we can see broken fences. Under Florida law, you are entirely responsible to lawsuits if your animals get off your property. In other words, make sure your fences are secure, that they can contain your animals. And when you have this kind of heat, add some sea salt to their food. It'll make them drink more, because, believe it or not, they're not drinking enough, and they're getting, um, what is called obstructions in the bowels and colickying and dying. So, this is a serious problem right now, and this is a service announcement to anybody that has animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Mary Gay Chaples, I live on Dyke Road. I wanna hit a couple of items. First of all, uh, when I was talking about the fire tax, uh, and I mentioned the doctor, actually, the doctor had bought that barn for his daughter who was in college, and he was hoping that she would graduate and be able to do large animal there. It did not happen, because he had blown 30,000-plus fighting the town on that tax, which, well, I explained, he wound up doing 7,000, and I helped mediate him out of it, because he was in such a bad situation. At any rate, that's number one. Number two, I would love to see that ugly thing in front of my house wrapped. Maybe you guys could talk to them about all these metal things. If you look in Davie, they have wraps on them, they're really cool. You have a photography contest all the time, there's great pictures. Maybe you can get them to do wraps with some of the pictures and put them around the metal ones. I have a big one right on my corner, and it's been there a long time, and it's very unsightly. Next issue. We have cattle and sheep on, um, right across from Lori Parish's place, it's on Larray and Malaluka. The reason I'm telling everybody this is because there's a bull in there with, there's 21 head in there of cattle, and there are steers, I don't think there's even a heifer in there, and a bull. There happens to be a black cow in the neighborhood who evidently is looking for mate. And she gets out, she's been out every day. Lori called me twice, she's been in Lori's yard, she has been pushing on the fence to get in. I gave several people that have tried to round her up permission to put her in. I just want the town to know, it's not our cows getting out. We don't know who owns this black cow. They had a brown one and a black one. The brown one disappeared. The black one keeps showing up. So, whoever owns her, we don't care, they can put her in, they can get her bread, and she'll stay home. But right now, she's banging on the fence. The next issue, the coyote issue. Haven't heard a lot about it, right? Well, the other day, I heard that the coyote walked through the shopping center on, uh, volunteer at about 2:00 in the afternoon. Brazen as can be, it's a coy dog. They thought it was a German shepherd. No, 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 it's a coyote. And I just leave it alone. You know, if you're not gonna shoot it, leave it alone. Uh, but that particular one in that area evidently has been killing sheep and goats and, um, right in that immediate area. So, I'm just letting you know, the issue hasn't gone away. There's about 14 of them that are still, uh, right behind that 30 acres. But it's wooded, it's very thick, and you can't get at them.
Right.
So, I think I covered all the bases for you.
Thank you, Gay.
Jim Lasky, followed by the final speaker, Debbie Green.
Just a couple more arrows for tonight's conversation. We just heard, and we heard at the last meeting, and the meeting before that, what we need to get doing in Palm Beach County, that's the county that Mr. Geller couldn't remember. But that's right adjacent, okay? That's right adjacent to the incineration in Palm Beach County, which has the problem of getting the yard waste and the wet waste, which is the organics, to burn.
Yep.
It's already permitted, it's already legit. We just wanna work on this second permit. Under a preponderance of, of evidence, a county or municipality can do that. It's right in the state law. So, please, consider that idea, and let's get rolling. This is, this has waited too long.
Thank you, Jim.
Debbie Green, followed by John Garotti.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th. I just wanted to clarify, I mean, listening to Governor, ugh, Commissioner Geller speak and give his report, um, he, he specifically clarified that the county-owned property adjacent to Southwest Ranches is not politically the place for a waste-to-energy. He's, he was very specific. We don't know, maybe there's, you know, at some point, maybe there's financial reasons that maybe some, maybe there's some who are no longer going to be running for office, that it doesn't matter what they do politically. As he said as well, Commissioner Fur is not of that thought. So, us being diligent in the fight against the threat of an incinerator being built adjacent to Southwest Ranches is not fear mongering, which I was, was told to a group at, uh, Sunshine Ranch's HOA meeting. So, I just want, so everybody could hear tonight, you could hear, you heard from Commissioner Geller, this is a waste-to-energy possibly being built adjacent to Southwest Ranches is not fear mongering, it is not off the table, it is not, you know, something that should just be dismissed. That's why we need to stay diligent in all of our efforts to make sure that doesn't happen, and to make sure that the county commission supports the work of the Broward Solid Waste Authority. So, no matter who's telling you this is fear mongering, it's not a thing you heard tonight, that is not the case.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll be quick. Good evening. John Garotti, 162nd Avenue. Hi, Laura, I'll be home soon. It's my wife's little greeting, I always gotta do that. But anyway, um, Kristi Laguna's retirement, that's a big deal for me. We met on very incorrect terms a few years ago, but let me tell you something. She's become a best friend to me and my family. We have four beautiful rescues because of her, and I wanna continue that. So, however, that message, I've talked to Russell about this before, DVPD does an incredible job, but unfortunately, we need to get the Humane Society out here, Animal Control, whatever agency, speak to the new director, because they're always full. I know you can't create a new facility, but I can only hold so many, and the other dog folks that do the same business I do from home can only do as much as they can do. But if we continue that strength with communication, the other day, Tom had to pick up a dog in the canal that passed, you know, it's, it's a tough deal. Kristi called that in. I, I'm, I'm willing to volunteer over and over again when a dog gets lost, any kind of an animal. Pig got lost. But anyway, that, that, that should continue, whether Kristi's here with us or not. So, however, the town can support anything with animals. You heard it, cows, pigs, whatever it is, it's wildlife, it's what we are. So, that's super important to all of us, whether it's politically motivated, whether it's not. Some people do it for fun, I do it for the love of the animal. So, another thing I wanted to talk about is the zero-waste solutions, right? We, we talk so much about zero waste, but I don't think, until we put some financial strength into it, some dollars and cents, we're never gonna really make the impact with, with the community or, you know, the actual threat itself. So, let's up this threat, like you heard from Debbie, you, you heard from your, your existing highest elected official in the room, let's elevate this threat. Let's make it a DEFCON 3, or whatever they call that in the nuclear world, right? We are facing something severe. When is the last time you guys heard that you have a chance to put in input on a 40-year garbage decision? Comes around every 40 years, right? I don't think he's ever been to the dump. And when you go to the dump, Bob said it today, it's, you could build a house out of there. It's incredible. So, not to keep repeating the same thing that you hear from many different people, oops. It's, it's an investment from the town. Yes, everything's gotta be budgeted, it's not an easy thing to do, but we have to start doing that. The plan that Jim continues to talk about was found by myself by mistake, by buying a piece of grass, but it's right there. We could impact it. Yes, we gotta talk to WM about what's in that contract, but if we can start, we just have to start. Believe me, you'll get this building packed with people that do not want incinerators or any sort of threat to the environment or threat to our animals whatsoever. Go Dolphins. Have a nice evening.
Great, thank you. That concludes public comment. Do we have any board reports this evening? Okay, come on up.
Um, do, do we have the thing? Okay. So, Debbie Green, on behalf of the ed board, um, we just wanted to, there's the new volunteer app that we're gonna start using through several departments and areas throughout the town, but one of them is on the ed board, and I know that, um, with the town scholarship. And I've heard a lot of people that have been saying, "Where can their kids get volunteer hours? What can they do?" There are, you know, starting work... They're already, you know, starting working on their hours for this coming year. So we're up on the screen, so if you can see it in TV land, you can stop it and scan in that code. And on there, there will be several opportunities that you'll find in Southwest Ranches, either at helping to educate people at the Rolling Oaks Park in putting the right kind of garbage and recycling and the right end trash, at the Equestrian Park, at the farmer's market. And there's just going to be more and more opportunities and they'll be on this app that you'll find and the kids can go on there and they can, from the app, you just volunteer, you say you want to do it and that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you Debbie. All right.
Okay, and then on behalf of the Zero Waste Task Force, I'm going to split my, we're going to split time with Richard. Okay, so one of the newest things that has come out of the Zero Waste Task Force is some of the lawn signs, which the Bergerons out of their Everglades Bergeron Fund, they've donated $2,500 towards the printing of these signs. So we're hoping that there's still so many people that aren't aware of the threat of incineration coming out or just anywhere in the county, we're trying to get, we're going to try and get these throughout the other cities as well. Okay, you can put them down.
Excellent job, Richard.
Thank you, Anna.
The other, the other thing that's been mentioned a couple times tonight is this community engagement meeting, which is the first public meeting that the Broward Solid Waste Authority's consultant is starting with to see, get the public's input. Now, when you first look at the flyer, first off, it doesn't give you any area for concern. You think it's a wonderful thing, so why do I need to go out? Because basically what the flyer says that they're sending out is that it's a discussion about the Solid Waste Authority of Broward County's master plan for an innovative, environmentally sustainable and economically efficient regional solid waste management system and to come out on September 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Lauderdale Veterans Park. Unfortunately, with, waste to energy falls under the innovative and environmentally sustainable when it's counted as recycling, which is part of how Commissioner Geller is saying that the county gets to whatever percent of recycling because they're counting that waste to energy as recycling. So this is the message we need to get out to everybody here and all of our friends throughout all the other counties and why it's so imperative that we need to like pack this place. I know it's in Lauderdale and it's a ways. Through the task force, we're going to put out an email if some people maybe want a carpool up there, but this just, this information needs to be shared with everybody and all your friends throughout all of the county.
Wait, did you, what date did you say?
It's Wednesday, next Wednesday, September 18th in, at Lauderdale Veterans Park. I have copies of the flyer.
We'll do an email blast on that. Russell, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, you know, we have to demand that decision makers manage resources and not waste. The existing incinerators must be closed down and no new ones should be built. Landfill practices must be reformed to prevent all pollution of air and water, including pre-processing of the residues at the landfills before burial to stabilize the organic fraction and prevent methane generation and use, and the use of residual separation research facilities. The facilities such as these should not be used to pre-process discarded materials before going to incinerators or any thermal treatment technologies. The landfills are a major source of greenhouse gases, particularly methane, which warms the atmosphere 23 to 72 times more quickly than carbon dioxide, as well as ground contamination. Incinerators or other burning and thermal treatment technologies such as biomass burners, gasification, pyrolysis, plasma arc, cement kills and power plants using waste as fuel are a direct and indirect source of greenhouse gases to the atmosphere and turns resources that should be reduced or recovered into toxic ashes that need to be disposed of safely. Neither landfills nor incinerators are an appropriate response to the challenge of peak oil, which make any new incinerator impractical within its lifetime, as embedded energy and oil within products will become too costly to replace. More energy can be saved and global warming impacts decrease by reducing waste, reusing products, recycling and composting than can be produced from burning discards or recovering landfill gases. What we need to do here is that we need to educate our residents, the businesses and visitors. The zero waste strategy is not a technology as such. It aims for better organization, better education and better industrial design. To achieve the cultural change needed to get to zero waste, communities must establish programs to educate and train residents, schoolchildren, college students, businesses and visitors about new rules and programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And thank you to everybody who's gotten involved in this effort. This has been, we've led the way in Broward County, there's no two ways about it, Southwest Ranches has, and couldn't be more proud of everybody who's in all the work that's been doing on this. Thank you. All right. Board reports, thank you.
Alrighty, so as agricultural liaison till you hire somebody, I'm going to do my best. So this is really important because I want to talk to our farmers tonight and it's all about soil. All right, so without soil, we can't survive. Healthy soil is the root source of a livelihood that sustains farms and communities all around the world. Good soil produces good crops that deliver a good income that enables families to flourish. Soil filters the water we drink, grows the food we eat and captures carbon dioxide. Soil is the largest carbon sink after the ocean that holds more carbon than all terrestrial plant life on earth. What a lot of people don't realize is three quarters of Spain is at risk of becoming a desert. 70% of European soil is considered unhealthy. And what we realize is one acre of organic farm can feed 300 people, much better than any kind of Monsanto poisoned food, Frankenstein seeds that they're selling us. Why are our kids so unhealthy these days? You know, when I was young, don't look at me now, but when I was young, we were not fat. In the 70s, you go to the beach, there wasn't a fat person on the beach. It's our food that is poisoning us, okay? And the processed foods. So what I wanted to warn people in our organic farms here in Southwest Ranches is not to use anything like a biochar in the soil. Once it's mixed in with your soil, you'll never get it out. Never, okay? And it doesn't nourish the soil. They've actually found that crop yields drop when you add biochar to your soil. Now, they're also worried because what they're finding is carcinogenic, mutagenic and soil erosion from using biochar. See, it hasn't been long-term tested, but these are just some of the preliminaries that they're finding, that it's dangerous to use. It's not terra prita, which is used in the Amazon, which was a humogenic process, this is a fire process. And you know what's really disingenuous of them? They say they're sequestering carbon, they don't add the carbon they're producing by burning wood into the atmosphere with the smoke. So they're being called out for a lot of the fallacies on biochar that we've been, you know, everybody that wants to sell something is going to give you their best foot forward, but be careful farms out here in Southwest Ranches because they're really pushing organic farms to use this product and we could ruin our soils and ruin our crops forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right, any further board reports? Seeing none. Council member comments?
I'll go.
Okay.
Surprise.
Here we go.
Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there and thank you for coming. Just go over a few things and then I have a couple discussion items I'd like to bring up. One is we have Bingo at the Barn coming up on the 14th of this month, Saturday. Dinner's going to start at 6:00 PM sharp, I hope, December. Are there tickets still available? Okay, so you can get them at the front desk, right? Thank you. Okay, that's one box. The next box, we have chess on, chess playing on Saturday, the 21st of this month, from 10:00 to 2:00, right here in Town Hall. It's very interesting and a lot of fun. Hopefully, everybody will attend. We're looking, I'm starting now, just to get it going. We're going to have our 25th anniversary celebration at the Rolling Oaks Park on the 7th of June. It starts at 10:00 AM with a parade, so you'll hear that a lot as things progress. And just a reminder for everybody, we have recycling stickers for our containers in the back and also in the lobby. We keep them there for general public use. Take one home if you need it, put it on the lid of your recycling container or the one you have in your house, so you know that we have, in my house, we actually have two. We have one right outside the door and one, you know, further on down. So just a reminder on something like that. We have hazmat at the barn this month on the 28th at 10:00 AM, 10:00 AM to 2:00, is it 2:00 or 4:00? Sorry. Till 2:00 with shredding and prescription drug drop off. The BCPA is going to be here on Tuesday, the 10th, I'm sorry, the 1st of October at 10:30 AM and they will have agricultural, their agricultural expert with them. That's all I have in general announcement. There's a couple of items I want to go over with the rest of the council, just to start the conversation or maybe continue it tonight, depending on what the consensus is. One deals with the situation at the preserve, dealing with the automobile deal, if we want to put it on for a discussion item for next meeting or if it's time sensitive, we'll talk about it tonight. I don't know what you guys want to do, I'm fine either way. Just, I think we just need to discuss it up here in front of the public and...
Yeah, no, I think we should put it on the agenda so that people are aware of it and they can, they can come out and weigh in it as well.
Okay, yeah, so let's put it on, can we put it on for a discussion item for the next meeting?
Next meeting would be great.
Yeah, that'd be great. We're okay with that.
I'm very good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I just want to get, I just want to get it out, get it out so we can all talk about it and then, you know, throw rocks at each other or whatever we do. And the other item I wanted to talk about was we just recently reduced tax, the services tax for fire and for garbage to the residents and that was their, in our, three years ago, we made this decision that our reserves were too high and we decided to give it back at the rate of half a million dollars a year for three, for three years, 1.5 million. And we're in the, and this is the final year of that. We happen to be in a very good financial position right now where our, we tried to reduce our reserves down to 20%, if I recall, if that was the number. And our reserves right now are almost 40%. And I think we need to continue that program of giving back in half a million dollar increments at this point until we can bring it back down to what's the city manager's, or the, there's a level, I think it's like 15 or 18% that's recommended.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, it's 17%, but that's best practices, but we need to be mindful of that. It all depends and varies depending on the location of the municipality. The closer to the water you are, the higher there is.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so it's kind of relative to where we're at. So I think the 20% line that we picked three years ago is, is good and we seem to be able to, you know, we've been lucky, we haven't been hit by a storm, but we do have, you know, financial resources to cover that, you know, with a line of credit and all of that. So I would like to see us, and if we want to discuss this next week, that's fine, but I'm just giving you my opinion now, I would like to continue that where we allocate half a million dollars or maybe possibly more to any, some sort of a rebate back to our residents like we did today, this year with that. I just want to keep the ball rolling is what I guess what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's a great idea.
We're in a great position to do that.
Right, right. And I don't, I mean, I think we can get a consensus on that this evening.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it's been...
Yes.
Are we, are we good? Bob, you're okay with that?
Keeping it at 20%?
Twenty percent, it's fine.
Well, no, keeping the, like, the half a million a year to kind of pay it down.
I was actually going to bring that up because I know that this is the last year and whether we want to do anything else like that or potentially next year drop, reduce our taxes again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I want to do is, is continue, is continue until we get down to the 20%.
Right.
I'm not 100% comfortable with the 20% to be honest with you. I think it's more like 22 to 25%.
That's fine.
Something we want to negotiate.
But, but clearly, we're way above that and this is the residents' money and I think that giving it back to them is the right thing to do.
Yep.
And so I absolutely support where you're going.
Yeah, that's where I'm going, what the final number shakes out to, we'll see because, as you know, Emil has came, came up with a really fantastic system...
Right.
...to help us make a lot of money.
Which, which won't always go on forever because as interest rates come down, that's going to go away. It's going to go away.
Well, I don't know if it's going to go away, but I think it'll be greatly reduced.
It'll be greatly reduced.
It'll be reduced once, once the interest rate drops.
But there's other things in the pipeline too.
Yeah.
The CCA property, things like that that we'll need to continue to work through.
Yeah, so we're going to have a, we're going to have these cash flow situations that will benefit from, that'll benefit us and we need to pass that back to the, back to the residents.
Correct. So, so Russell or Richard, from your perspective, what do we need to do on there? Do we need a formal item on here or is that part of our next budget process or how do we, how do we approach that?
Yeah, it's, I'm great, I'm grateful, excuse me, that you brought this issue up, but Emil and I have been working and will be presenting soon a fund balance policy to the town council. We've been actually talking about this for quite some time and we were working on this and hope to have this for you for the, actually for the next meeting. So a fund balance policy as well as an investment policy that will help guide future decisions like this. While, you know, as a town administrator, it's not something that we want to see where we constantly are dipping into reserves or fund balance for ongoing operations. We are certainly in a unique situation right now and, you know, next year or the year after might be the right time to do some of this stuff, but we want to be guided by a fund balance policy first. So we will be bringing that forward to you.
Right. These are the kind of problems that it's nice to talk about, I got to tell you.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, and I think we need to, you know, do our best to, when we can give it back, give it back.
Absolutely.
You know, and there may come a time when we can't afford to give it back and then we'll have to pause, you know, on something like that. And with that, I'll wrap it up.
Great, thank you, Gary. Great, great recommendations. Who'd like to go next?
Bob.
Anybody?
All right.
I'll go.
All right, Jim.
All right. Emil and staff, thank you for this budget. There's very few towns, I'm sure, that have a surplus budget like us and to be able to give back like Gary just said to the town in the future is just absolutely amazing. So thank you for your staff, thank you for working hard and thank you for your insight on investments and stuff to make this possible. Thank you. The Broward County School Board, you know, I mentioned here several months back that they were going to close some schools. They're not closing schools, but they are going to have some very special meetings on what to do with under-enrolled schools. And there's a number of them, I think there's somewhere close to 20, under-enrolled schools in Broward County. That scares me a little bit, there's none here in Southwest Ranches, I understand that, but it may affect some of your friends, neighbors or people. So do me a favor and go to the Broward County School Board webpage and look and see when those meetings are. See if it's a school that you, your friends or somebody knows that's going to be talked about and try to attend that meeting. It scares me a little bit when there's an under-enrolled school. That's a polite way of saying that they may close it. I'm not sitting here saying they are going to close them, but, you know, it's just a scary thing that when they start talking about that the schools are actually under-enrolled. So please check in on that. I would like to say that I want to thank Debbie for her initiative on this new app that the Seek Society come up with. We were able to, and I know it took them a long time with my phone because I had absolutely... We were able to, and I know it took them a long time with my phone, 'cause I had absolutely no idea how to do it, but they were able to put the, the app on the phone for me, so I'm now one of those that has that app. But, thank you for that. It is interesting to see that you can volunteer. It's interesting to see where the areas are at and who. The idea of educating our residents, you know, we need a little bit more work on the proposal of putting them out at the farmer's market, sitting by the garbage can. We need to tell them a little bit about what to say. If somebody walks up to throw something in the garbage can, it's not right, you can't just yell at them and say, "Hey, don't do that." We have to educate them why they can't. There's so many things to recycling, reusing, and refurbishing. There's a lot of things that people don't know that you can recycle, and that's what we have to do. We have to educate our people on recycling. If we can recycle, refurbish, and reuse, the landfills don't get filled up. We don't need the incinerators, and, you know, everything works better. Take the food waste, put it out with the yard waste, use it for yard fertilizer, use it for things. We'll never get to zero waste. There's just no way humans will ever get to zero waste, but it'd be nice that if we could cut it down and live a very comfortable life without having to ruin it for our kids or our grandkids. I wanna say I attended a fire board meeting, and I was very proud to say that, that the, the fire board there, that chief, you're here, we are looking to help the volunteer fire department. They have a couple trucks there, or a truck there, that nobody can drive. It's a stick shift. They keep tearing the transmission up, and there's a new truck, hopefully coming soon, automatic, that they'll be able to drive. And it seems kinda funny that nobody can drive them, 'cause we all probably grew up, I say, well, most of us in here right now grew up driving a stick shift, but the younger generation have no idea what a stick shift is all about. You know, it's really, really something. Officer Laguna, this evening, what a send-off that was for her. I wish her all the best. She is a wonderful officer. I know she hasn't been with us that long. She come here in 2020, but that is a very dedicated officer, and I hope that whoever replaces her will be just as dedicated. We're very lucky here, that the people that come to Southwest Ranches consider us family. And when you go on vacation, sign up for that vacation watch, you can actually see, you get a, a message on your phone every time they show up. It'll be 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning that they'll be at the house, checking the house. That's a very comfortable feeling if you're on vacation for a period of time. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, and thank you all for attending.
Great. Thank you, Jim. David?
Thank you. Thank, thank you, folks. The last few that are hanging out here this late, I know it's getting pretty, pretty late here. Officer Laguna once told me that when she came to my home, my patrol cat followed her around the house. So, it was really interesting. He was making sure that she was checking everything. For the incinerator, the related issue is recycling. Remember, folks, no pizza boxes, no styrofoam, no plastic bags. That stuff doesn't mix well at the sorter, clogs up the sorter, contaminates the recycling, and in the end, they're gonna pass those costs on to us, which we really don't want. So, it, it kinda helps us if you keep your recycling clean. It helps our budget process as well, so, and keeps your taxes as low. Speaking of taxes, as we heard, 3.900, that's your milage rate. When this council took our seats back in 2020, milage rate 4.2125. Going back all the way to 2009, the Budget Resolution 2009-089, that was the last time the milage rate was this close, and that was 15 years ago, and that was 3.94. And that goes to the 2009, 2010 budget year. So, we've done really well up here. This town is very financially found, sound. Debbie, your little signs that you showed, you forgot to mention that I was... I, I helped coordinate getting, getting the signs put together. I would work with Debbie, Jim, and Richard for input on the artwork on that. Everybody did a great job saying, "This needed to be changed, this needed to be changed." We came up with a final product, product about two days ago. I tried to get it rushed for yesterday's meeting, couldn't do it, but we got it tonight, so Said hand-delivered them to me. Last, up at the front, you know, we're in September, next month, October, Halloween, we have the Halloween Home Decorating Contest. This is gonna be a great little event. I'm expecting to see some very interesting-looking homes. October 18th is the deadline to register your home. Judging will be conducted by the Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board, beginning October 21st. Awards will be given to first, second, and third place winners. Mail your entry form to Susan S. Cuts at southwestranches.org, and you'll get an entry form, and I hope to see some homes set up for that. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, David. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be pretty quick. I just have a couple of things. Gary, I'm glad you brought up the subsidies, because that's been on my mind since our last meeting. And when we got the text message this week that we're roughly $8 million ahead of the game this year, plus the forfeiture fund, I looked at that and said, "That's ripe for continuing the program the way we've been doing it." I guess we'll have to figure out what we think that number will be over the next couple of years, just given our true-ups and those sorts of things, but totally support it. Think it's a good idea. I also think we ought to do a little bit of capital planning with the balance. I'd hate to constantly be, "Well, we need this, we need that mid-year, and we're pulling it out of the, our reserves." You know, in the business world, we do capital planning on a five-year basis, more or less, because projects take time, they cost money, and, you know, based on our cash flows, et cetera. So, maybe that's something we wanna start talking with Russell and Emile on doing, so that the next project we wanna do, we have control over, and we're not asking Talah to ask you for the money, you know?
Yeah. No, I didn't, sorry, I didn't mean...
Oh, okay.
Didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no problem.
Can I add on to that just a second?
Sure, please, please.
Just one quick thought. I do, you know, in the back of my mind, I'm, I have this big expense of a public safety building...
Right.
That's coming here. So, I, I agree 100% with what you're saying. We need to be planning this out, but let's keep that in mind as we do it, because that's gonna be, that's gonna be a big chunk of change.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's, that's where the, hopefully, the, what we used, what we call the CCA property.
Right.
That will hopefully...
Help us as well.
...mitigate a lot of that.
Yeah. Well, that's also in the back of my mind.
That's part of the planning.
Part of the plan, exactly. Thank you. You know, in the back of our minds, doesn't get it on paper. We don't have real numbers to attach it to. We don't, we don't know where we can build that building at this point.
Yeah, we need pro forma.
We need a capital plan, that's what it comes down to. So, yeah, yeah, so, I mean, I'd love to see you guys start working on that, and I don't know whether we wait for the next budget cycle or jump on it now to start planning, because...
Jump on it now.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, you know, whatever that building is, I don't even wanna throw a number out on what the public safety building will cost, but I know it could take a substantial amount of reserves and as well, additional income coming in. So, very good. Thanks for bringing that up, Gary. I also wanted to recognize individually Kristi Laguna. She has been, I, I'm shocked she's only with us for four years. I feel like I know the woman for 10 years, because, you know, every time she comes down my street, or I see her somewhere, she always makes the point of coming over and saying hello and, and letting me know what's going on in the neighborhood. You know, she really gives a personal touch, and as everybody on the council knows, everybody doesn't have visibility into the crime reports. She does a lot of investigation. She writes a lot of summonses for speeding and all that. She's a, a good cop, and she's got the right attitude for our town. It's funny how many people know her. You know, what, what was her name again? Kristi Laguna? "Oh, I've known her." You know, she's always so nice to us. That's community-oriented policing, which has been our goal all the way along. It's great to have the right people in, in, in those roles, because we see what can happen when the wrong people are there, and I don't even wanna make a comparison there. I did wanna bring up our, our new piece of technology at the entrance to the room here. You know, when I look at that, I think of threats, I think of all the downside of it, but I have to say something. Broward County's got them in all the schools now. They're in office buildings. I go into offices, you know, as part of my role, and I am not used to that in the office world, but when I go past the security guards at the front desks in a lot of offices now, you've gotta walk through. It's common in government now, when we were down in Miramar for some of their meetings, it's the same thing in Pembroke Pines. I wanna give some credit, potentially nominate a name. Louis contacted me, geez, his last name's not coming to mind.
Gregory.
Thank you. Louis Gregory, who everybody knows, because he's the emcee when we do our, when we do the 5K for the, for the scholarship fund. He's at tons of meetings. He's a, he's, he's a great guy. He mentioned this to me three or four months ago, and I'm like, hmm, do we really need it? And I brought it back to Russell, and we honestly haven't talked about it in quite a while. So, I said to Russell, "Where did this come from?" Well, I don't know whether Louis reached out, or, you know, others on the council also thought it was an important thing, and it's to protect all of us. I mean, we already have a, a sign on the door that says, "No gun allowed, guns allowed during council meetings." If you have ill intent, it doesn't stop you, but, you know, having that device sitting right there with a police officer within range of it gives me a little bit of peace of mind. So, it's the way things are these days. I won't even get into Second Amendment. I believe in the Second Amendment. I'm a gun owner, but not in this room. So, I just wanted to point that out. If you guys wanna name it Big Louis, I'll nominate that name. They, they seem to name them. They're naming them in the schools now, too, so... All right, it seems like it's hitting like a lead balloon, so I'll, I'll end on that. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, folks, for coming out tonight.
All right, appreciate it. I just wanna touch on a couple items fairly quickly. Just a quick update that we, we met with, we went to actually one of the school board meetings, one of their workshops, to talk about the South Florida Wildlife Center and the potential use of the property there. It was very well received. That was very encouraging, very well received. They are gonna need to do a formal adoption proposal for it, which they're working on, and we have a meeting set up with some of the key people there at, at the Broward County School Board to work out the details for that, so that's moving forward. Couldn't be more excited about that. It's great to see that coming together. We're also gonna be meeting with the Board of Directors of the South Florida Wildlife Center, so that we can make sure that they, they're comfortable and that we're all moving in the right direction. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was, we have talked a lot recently, we've got this proposal for the water that we voted on once positively, and we'll be coming back to us, I think, in the next meeting. And, but that's, that's a small piece, piece of a much larger picture. And what I wanted to do was bring this forward just as a, something you need to be thinking about, but in the near future, I would like to see us put together a workshop of Pembroke Pines, Sunrise, Davie, Cooper City, to be a true workshop where we start looking at long-term, down the road, what is, what are we gonna do for water? With everything that we're talking about here, I'm, I'm in no hurry to get off the wells. I, you know, I test my water every year, and I, it comes out stellar every year. So, so I am very happy with the water that I'm on. However, the world is changing around us, and it behooves us to make a well-thought-out plan ahead of time, rather than reacting when eventually something happens and our water supply starts getting contaminated for one reason or another. And so, what I, what I'd like to do, what, what the thought is here, is we're not, we're not spending money, we're not, you know, putting wells in, or, or, we're not, we're not putting the, the pipes or the septic in, you know, tomorrow. But what we would, what makes sense to do is to do the planning, to get the feedback from each of those municipalities, to determine which ones are interested in covering which parts of our town, eventually, somewhere down the line. So that when they do projects like what they're doing, gonna potentially, hopefully be doing for the Bergerons or for the old CCA property, that they will put the structure in that will be good for the next 50 years, not just the structure that, you know, hooks up that one piece of property. And I was talking to Mayor Castillo about that, and he was, he was very amenable to having that conversation. He, he, he had the same thought, you know, "Let's do this right, let's figure out what those boundaries are, whatever, whatever makes sense, not pushing for any particular boundary." And so, so I think, I think we're over the issues of the past. I certainly hope we are, I know I am. And, and this is an opportunity to really do some long-range planning for our town. Once again, we're not, we're not, we're not tearing up anything, you know, in the near future, but let's, let's do the planning. So, so if everybody's in agreement with that, I'd like to direct Russell to kind of pull that, that meeting together. We need, we're gonna need representatives from all those different communities.
Can, can I add to that?
Sure.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's, it's smart, because we should plan before there's a catastrophe.
Right.
But I also would like to talk amongst ourselves before we ever meet with them.
Okay.
Because I do not like the idea of obliging our residents to have to go to pines for water due to something. Now, we ought to define triggering events, water contamination at some level, and I don't know what those are, 'cause I'm not educated on that, but I'd, I'd rather not sign any agreements with any of these cities that say, "We're now obliged to, once 10 or 15, or 30, or 50 residents," or homes, I should say, "are attached," that whole subdivision of our town, country estates needs to sign up now and be...
Yeah, no, no, I, I don't support that either.
Well, but that's what I would like to talk about in advance, before we ever get with them.
Yeah, but that's a great point, and, and before any rumors or anything gets, gets, let me, let me just be more, thank you for bringing that up, 'cause I wanna be clear on what it is I'm saying. So, I'm, I would not, I'm not talking about forcing anybody into any water, you know...
I'm not suggesting...
I know you're not, I know you're not.
Sure.
But it, I'm just trying to explain what, what I'm saying and what I'm not saying.
Okay.
What I'm saying is to lay out the plan ahead of time. Now, we are already having more and more, as we see, because it comes before the council every time it happens. I mean, it's almost like every other council meeting, we've got two or three requests to, to go on water. So, the thought is, let's, let's know ahead of time, when we get those requests for right now, which municipality is the right municipality to go to. They have the capacity, they have the desire, and in the long run, they have the willingness to put the infrastructure in there, so that they can meet the need for that, that whole, whole area. So, so it will guide us with those individual, as those requests come along, to make sure we do it in the right way. And it will give those other municipalities the, the ability to know and to think, to do their long-range planning, right? So that when they are looking at what their capacities are, they know that someday, way in the future, you know, we're gonna need to set aside the capacity for the ranches, because we've already made the commitment to do that.
Excellent ideas.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know whether we wanna call it a workshop, or we put some time on the agenda, so we can discuss how we feel about some of these various items.
I agree.
So, great idea.
Mayor, there's another issue, too. We forget that the groundwater is rising, and we have septics. So, not only do we have a water issue, but in the future, we may have a septic issue also. That groundwater's coming up, and it's not gonna stop, you know, and that the drain fields aren't gonna work, septic tanks aren't gonna work. So, not only are you talking about water, but maybe in the future, you know, with the septic...
It's all part of, it's all part of the same...
All part of it.
Yeah, absolutely, Jim. Yeah, absolutely, Jim.
It's a major problem.
At the same time, you don't tear up town twice.
Right.
Right.
And if I can add.
Yeah, go ahead.
As Senator Geller pointed out about the groundwater contamination, as the oceans start rising.
It's going to happen.
We're going to end up having our wells contaminated.
It's going to happen, yeah.
It's going to happen one day. I mean, we may be, all of us may be off in better paradise, but, you know, it will happen.
Yeah, yeah, so let's plan for it. We're all good, good with that. Okay. So I think, I think you have some direction there?
Clear direction. My suggestion would be that we do this as a single-topic workshop. If we're going to involve utility directors or representatives from those different municipalities, there's going to be a lot of issues centered around that, and I think we need enough time to discuss this issue properly.
Right, so what I'm hearing is, is two separate meetings. I wouldn't, we've already got a lot on the next agenda, so I wouldn't put it on that one, but maybe, maybe the first agenda in October, we can just have an item on our, on our agenda for an internal discussion, so it'll give us some time to think about it, talk to our residents, come back with some thoughts, just to get our, our general thoughts in line, and then set up a separate workshop, a single, single item. All right, so appreciate the support on that. All right, so that concludes my comments. Any legal comments?
None tonight, Mayor, thank you.
All right, we have administrative comments.
Mayor, I'll make this brief. Just alluding to the metal detector that Councilmember Hartman brought forward, just wanted to let everybody know that this is tonight basically a "soft opening," quote-unquote. So today we're featuring it, that it works, but we will have more stringent, we'll have more stringent utilization of it in future meetings. We'll have a policy that will kind of center around how we're going to utilize that, what we're going to do when people refuse to utilize it or to pass through it and certain things like that. So it will be more stringently adhered to, the utilization of it, so I just wanted to bring that forward. Today was more of a soft opening. The other thing I wanted just to mention, Senator Geller talked about the city managers' group and what they're working on. So they are working on a new amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County for the distribution of the surtax funding. A letter was sent to County Administrator Monica Sopero today outlining what that proposal looks like, and essentially, I'm going to give just a very broad overview. The city manager group is essentially asking for a 10% basically guaranteed annual minimum of the surtax funding that will go towards municipalities for R&amp;M projects that will be based on a formula of centerline miles. So we looked at a proposal, if that were to be approved and adopted, of what that would represent, and the example given was that for Southwest Ranches specifically, based on 2024, we would have received somewhere in the neighborhood of about $500,000 in funding if that proposal were adopted. So they're working towards this. It's a long way from being adopted, but just wanted to let you know that they're, we are working with the county on that issue.
Right, great.
Russell, can I ask you a couple of questions about it? Because something he said was confusing to me. Do you mind?
No, go ahead.
So he was saying that a lot of the.
I'm sorry. A lot of the municipalities can't afford the 10% match. And I kind of thought what he was saying then is that's what this city manager proposal was all about, for, you know, federal and state grants where there's a matching amount to it. But what you're saying is 10% of the overall surcharge, surtax budget should be used towards the smaller cities, and that would be 500,000 for us.
For us, correct.
Okay, so.
Yeah, what he was referring to was that some cities were saying that whatever they could possibly, he was offering a solution where they could use funding that they could then use to leverage when there's a federal or state match, and that some cities, I'm not aware which cities, but some cities refuse that. I've never seen that proposal. It's possible that it was vetted and discussed before I started attending some of those meetings. I've never seen that proposal.
Okay, okay, so two separate things.
Yeah.
And I like what you proposed. Thank you, or they proposed. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Russell. All right, item number 11, please.
Item number 11 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Kayla's Contractors in the amount of $440,245.00 of the American Rescue Plan-funded Dykes Road piping project, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a great project, once again, building on to a lot of the drainage projects that we've already been doing and is making an important connection in there, so excited about this project. Is there any public comment on this item?
Newell Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue, and I'll be asking this on each one, so if you want to add it in at that point when you do it, what is our share of it out of the general funds? I know we've got the American Rescue Plan. It's not the whole 440, I don't believe. If it is, I'm great, but what's our contribution? Is it 10% or what? The exact number.
Great, thank you, Neil. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed.
I can address that, Mayor.
Okay.
This project is 100% funded through the ARPA funding, so there is no town match.
Great, thank you. All right, any other public, any other council comment on this?
Yeah, I'd like to bring something up about this. So there's been some political mail that's gone out. Somebody handed it to me, and, you know, it leads off, talk about fear-mongering. Our town's flooding problems are becoming progressively worse. It's becoming a crisis, and we need to do something about this now. Gary, you were chair of the Drainage Committee. Steve, you were chair before me, and I've been chair, I was chair and on the Drainage Committee for over 10 years.
What's even in my.
I mean, between the three of us, we've been on the Drainage Committee since the town was formed, more or less. Everybody's aware. We're, we, every year, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't have an exact count, but we've spent well into the millions, tens of millions, potentially on drainage over the time the town's been in existence. We don't have a progressively worsening problem. Anybody who says that is just not aware of what's going on in town. We've been doing drainage projects every single year. We're doing infrastructure projects every single year. I can't tell you how much nicer 185th and 186th is now, that every time we get a decent rain, not even a big rain, it's not even flooded anymore. I mean, many, many roads in our town 20 years ago, 30 years ago, were flooded for days. Now, back to fear-mongering. The pictures I saw in this particular circular had photos that looked like they were probably from the last time we got 24 inches of rain. Now, what people don't understand, that I really want the residents at home to know, we're at the mercy of that canal on Griffin Road, and that's run by South Florida Water Management. And South Florida Water Management just can't turn on their pumps the day before a storm is coming because they have a license with the Army Corps of Engineers that says they can only pump so much water into the Everglades and so much water into the ocean. All of that is regulated at the federal level. If South Florida Water Management wants to change, they have a whole huge program that's years-long to change how much water Griffin Road, yep, I call it Griffin Road Canal, but C-11 needs to move in each direction. That's not something that is arbitrary. Now, for a couple of years there, when they changed help up at the command center that's up in West Palm Beach on, that, the operations center, I should say, that, that runs all these pumps throughout the South Florida Water Management's domain, they had some problems, and they were, we were flooding because they were not pumping down. That was made clear to them through us, through South Broward. I don't know if Central Broward had much to do with that, but that was fixed. That doesn't need to be fixed again. They are complying with the law again, like they did prior to those times when we were flooding. There's also suggestions in there, we start putting in pumps. Okay, just to be clear, this side of town, this side of town, Sunshine Ranches, you can't put pumps in. This is a gravity system. This is designed to drain into Griffin Road Canal as it's pumped down. Over in Country Estates, or I really should say, west of I-75, we're all part of South Broward Drainage District, they have pumps. They're there. They can't put in bigger pumps. They're licensed to drain our basin at a particular rate. Pumping it into the Everglades fast, that's been tried, too. Back about 15 years ago, South Florida Water Management was just pushing it all into the Everglades, not leaving it in our canals to percolate down, and what were they doing? They were getting the farmers, excuse me, the hunters and the Indians pretty upset because all the wildlife was dying off because they thought it was a better idea to pump it out into the Everglades. All of this stuff has been thought through, whether it's our drainage system here on this side of town, our drainage system on the other side of town, it's all regulated. You can't just put a Band-Aid on. Now, the other side of that conversation is what can be done? We can continue attracting money on an annual basis from the state, from the federal government, like we're doing here. That's the way we've been doing things in town. If anybody thinks it's a great idea to raise taxes to improve our drainage, raise your hand. I won't. I won't vote for something like that. We've had an excellent mechanism in place. Now, just to be clear, when we get 24 inches of rain, like, we've gotten in the past four years, three storms that have given us, I think the lowest one was 18, 19 inches. One was 24, one was 27. Town stays flooded for a week, okay? Why? South Florida Water Management is never going to start building additional pumps to move that into the Everglades faster. It doesn't work that way. We need to continue to recharge the aquifers between the Floridian Aquifer and the Biscayne Aquifer with the water that falls on our land. So when you start seeing all these great ideas, question the source. It's usually a lack of understanding, a lack of experience, and a lack of knowledge. That's all I've got to say about.
Bob, also, David, if I may, also, keep in mind.
Councilman Hartman, those pictures were taken by your house and mine in April of this year.
Laurie, sit down. You're out of order.
It rains.
Out of order.
He's doing it to me.
I didn't say your name.
All right.
No, you do a lot.
Go on.
Bob.
All right, all right.
Quiet, quiet.
Okay. Councilman Hartman, I would like to remind you that we are going to be having an impoundment area here very shortly. It's going to be pumping out of the C-11, and it's, I forget how many feet, acres.
Yeah.
It is. It's a huge number of just holding and retaining water between 27 and the new dike that they're going to make. So that's going to, that's going to help us.
Yep.
Yeah, it's going to go all the way through there, and that's coming up in the future. So we will have a couple of new pumps.
Yep.
Further out west.
For that.
Just for that alone, you know? So I just want to make mention of that. David, you had.
Bob, can you explain where Pembroke Pines' water flows?
Yeah, Pembroke Pines' water, oh, sorry, again, Pembroke Pines' water in the Sunshine, excuse me, in, in the west side of town, flows through all those north-south canals that come from Sheridan Street all the way up to Griffin Road Canal. So that's predominantly South Broward. I'm not entirely sure on Central Broward, but South Broward Drainage District, they are pines. They're all the way down to Snake Creek, which is that big canal that's down on 27, about eight miles south of us. That whole basin is part of us. That flows, that drains Pembroke Pines through our town into Griffin Road Canal, and generally, our water goes into the Everglades. There's a dike right on, at 100th on Griffin Road. You'll see it. It's a big metal structure there. That stops the water from going east. That's a whole different drainage basin than we're in. But we have the water, actually, it's from Miramar, north, all the way up to Griffin Road Canal, all flows through our town. It does.
Well, we've done a ton of work in that, and it's exciting, and this is just one more piece to all the work that we've done to improve the drainage.
Yeah, just as a reminder, as of a few years ago, during certain times of the year, we actually had to close off Dykes Road.
Yeah.
We don't have to do that now.
We don't have to do it anymore.
Nope.
Yeah.
I mean, literally.
Another problem solved.
We had cars turned into submarines.
Yeah, 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 many times. All right, any other comment on this? Seeing none, if you can, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Wolf Creek Construction in the amount of $87,063.31 for construction of the Southwest 205th Avenue and Southwest 49th Court drainage project, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2324 town budget, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Do I have a motion on the item?
Motion approved.
Have a motion and a second.
Go ahead. Bob's got, it's all right. I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Is there any council comment on the item? Seeing none, any public comment on the item?
Same question. Which part of this is part of our budget, or is this part of the $100,000 that we put forward for drainage every year in our budget? Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Mayor, we budgeted $105,000 in this current fiscal year budget for this project. Due to some design costs, we incurred about $20,000 in design costs for this, and the bid came in at $87,000. So this is all town-funded. It's not a ARPA-funded project, and we have to do a small budget adjustment of about $2,600 to account for the difference.
Great, thank you, Russell.
You're welcome.
All right, seeing other public, public comment closed. Any final council comment? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item 13 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, declaring town-owned property as surplus inventory, authorizing the town administrator to properly dispose of the surplus inventory, waiving all applicable procurement code provisions to the contrary, allowing the town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents that may be necessary to dispose of the surplus inventory and to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second on the item. Is there any discussion on this item? The council, seeing none. There is, this is, if you have the full backup, there's a whole list of all the equipment that's there. It's all crammed into closets and things like that, so we're just trying to do a little housekeeping and clean things up. Is there any public comment?
Well, since I'm not privy to what it is, I just want to make sure that you're not taking easements and turning them back to the owners, which we've done before by error. So I'm just kind of a watchdog on that because someday we might put in our trails and, and multipurpose trails.
100%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gay.
Mayor, this has no land involved.
It has no land.
This is only equipment here at town.
These are copiers.
Maybe you can recap.
All right, whoa, 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 whoa.
Sorry.
Neil, your comment?
Newell Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. What I wanted to know is, do we have a buyer for this stuff, or is this just going in the dumpster, or what are we doing? That's my question.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Is any other public comment?
John Garrati, 162nd Avenue, I'm going to touch on what Neil said about this surplus. Who has access to that? You know, can you buy some of it? Whatever list there is, I'm not looking at it, but is this a one-time thing, or is this forever, meaning any surplus inventory just gets discarded without a procedure? So there could be some of these things that the residents could use, or is it going? I know, I remember the conversation about the AR-15s, but I know there's more to this, but if you can just clarify, that would be great.
We will, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. So this is a process, right? So the way, the way the process works, it's really a two-step process. Number one, you have to declare what equipment you no longer need, that it's basically collecting dust somewhere. And so in the backup here, in the full agenda, is a list of every piece of equipment that we're talking about, and it is all equipment. A lot of it is old technology that we can't use anymore. Some of it is old furniture that is, can't really be used anymore, and a lot of it is stuffed into, literally, literally stuffed into closets, and so we're, it's, it's stuff that we need to get rid of. The second part of the process is actually getting rid of it. I'm not sure what, Russell, maybe you can talk exactly how that, how that would play out.
Certainly, Mayor. So what we would do is, we would utilize a company, a third party, that would basically take all of the, all of the surplus equipment, put it out on the internet as a online auction essentially, and try to sell this stuff at, you know, by lots. And whatever is sold, they will give us a, basically, the percentage after they take their buyers, you know, their premium from it, and remit the rest of the payment to the town.
Perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Good. So this is, this is standard, we don't do it very often, but it is a process that is well-documented and meets all, all regulations. All right, any other comments from the council on this? Seeing none, if we can, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 14 is a resolution of the Town Council of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the town administrator to prepare and submit a grant application to Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Resilient Florida Program, to help fund the Southwest 162nd Avenue Drainage Project in the amount of $263,250.00 with an equal town match, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to enter into any and all agreements necessary and proper to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great. And you want to speak to the funding? I mean, it's kind of laid out there, but.
Yeah. So this is the application of, for a grant. And if we are awarded the grant, then we will have required a 50% match, which will come from town funds.
Great. Thank you.
We may, now, we may be able to utilize ARPA funds for that 50% match. So let me be clear about that as well.
Okay. Great. Awesome. Any council comment on this item?
This is 262 for a drainage project, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the total project is anticipated to be, what we're looking to apply for is $526,500 and then the town match would be the 260.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any public comment on this item?
Happens to be in my street. John Garrati, once again. Is this because of the shortage of what the bid came in on that street to fix the initial? Because I know they did half the road. And if so, if there's any sort of a timeframe and if did they, did they address the concerns that Rod had to go out there every single day, meaning, you know, I know you can't control the contractor, but my biggest question to this was, was it the shortage on the bid amounts that came in that you're needing this extra funding? That's all.
Thank you. We have someone that can.
Yeah, I, I can address this and I may actually call Rod up. So Rod, if you can just come up and stand by, but essentially, we have a Green Meadows Drainage Project with, which has a central component, a base bid, what we call, and a couple of add alternate options. So there were essentially three add alternate options. So we're about to award the base bid, which was, we had budgeted for that project and after survey and design, $791,000. The base bid came in at $624,000, so we're well underneath for the base bid. But if we wanted to do some of these other options, which in this particular case, what we would be applying for is envisioned to do alt option two, which is 162nd Street and Sterling Road. This would assist us in, in making up that shortfall because we wouldn't have, we, we never anticipated doing all of the other add alt options. Basically, it was the base bid, but the contract we did ask for in the, in the, in the, in the bid specifications to get, to get other segments. And so if we got this funding, if we're awarded this funding, we would seek to go ahead and do option two for the 162nd and Sterling Road section.
Great. Thank you.
Mayor, council, just to answer the gentleman's question, so this is a, a different phase of that same project. So it's not, it's not the same project. It's not essentially a correction of that project. That work has been done already. It's just a different phase. That's basically going to take the existing system and stretch it out to Sterling and drain out west.
Right. Thank you, Rod. I mean, and I think that, I think that goes to the overall drainage plan, that we're, we've got a lot of work that has already been laid out. We've done a ton of work already on that and we're methodically working through the rest of the plan.